Good morning. Welcome to the meeting of the Oaklusa County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five at eight thirty a.m. in Crestview. We'll begin this morning with an invocation led by Chaplain Shane Hardesty, the Oaklusa County Corrections Department. And then the pledge of allegiance with the presentation of the colors by the Oaklusa County Corrections Department and Public Safety Department. So grateful for the combined honor guard. Will you stand with us?
I like what it says right in front of me. In God we trust. Amen. Father, we thank you for this another day and we can gather together as brothers and sisters in Christ, but as citizens here in this community. Father, my prayer today is for these men and women. As your word instructs us to pray for those in positions of authority, what great responsibility you've given them. And Father, we as citizens rely upon them to make good decisions, to help us and to help others. So I pray today and in the days to come. Father, as they lead, I pray you give them wisdom, for all wisdom comes from you. And they need great wisdom, especially in these times of today, to make decisions, Father, that will affect so many. So I pray for them, these men and women. I pray for their families. I pray for each and every person here that we would truly trust in you. Father, we thank you for them, and we lift them up now to you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public which is famous, the nation under God, in this small, but large, vast, and all.
Perry. Colors. Right. Face. Board. Mark.
Chaplain, before you go, I don't think it's commonly known that inside of our jail, we understand overcrowded issues. We understand the age of the facility and many of the challenges that go along with that. But I don't think it's commonly known that we have a full-time chaplain. That, and so I just thank you for the work that you do. I know it's on our side. It's a volunteer position. On your side, you raise support through a jail ministry organization, but you show up to work there every day and you minister to so many inmates in and out, but also to the staff that's there.
Yes.
And so thank you for the moral efforts that you put in, for the opportunity that you give to be a shining light inside of a place in so oftenly people's darkest times.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you. All part of one big team.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hofstadter.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This frigid morning as we close out the year. We want to take a little time this morning and recognize what we consider our most valuable asset. That's our employees. As you know, we do so during certain intervals in their career. We have a number of service awards this morning. As I call your name, if you'll come forward and be recognized and stand with us, and we'll get a picture afterwards. First, and this is a two-year service award, I'd like to ask Jared Porter to come forward. Jared is a certified equipment technician, and he's with the Transit Division. We have a couple of five-year service awards. I'd next like to recognize Christie Kratz, and Christie's with the Human Resources Department, and she is a Human Resource Generalist I. Next, with another five-year service award, I'd like to ask Bradley Callaway to come forward. Bradley is with the Water and Sewer Department, and he's Electrical Supervisor. And lastly, and this is a big one, a twenty-five-year service award, I'd like to ask Pamela McKelvey to come forward. Pamela's with the Supervisor of Elections Office, and she's an Election Specialist II.
Notice our Supervisor of Elections, Paul Lux, was here with us. And Supervisor Lux, that speaks volumes of your agency to have a twenty-five-year employee and be able to come forward. Twenty-five years happen so quick. We grew up together, and so that shouldn't be twenty-five just yet, but it happens. Mr. Hofstadter.
Morning again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just have a couple of announcements this morning. I just want to remind the board that the Oaklusa Delegation Meeting is this Monday. It's at the O-Cab Building, so I'm certain we will see many of you there. Lastly, I just wanted to recognize Kelly Byrd, Becca Autry, and her team. We held our annual management retreat on Friday, well-attended by our senior management, our up-and-coming emerging leaders, had a great presentation from Mark Griffiths. We had a group that was engaged and participating, so it was certainly a worthwhile event. So thank you, Kelly and Becca, for your work on that. That's all I have, sir.
Yes, sir. Ms. Hosshihara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seeing as that this is our last meeting of two thousand and twenty-five, just wanted to wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I don't have any other dates.
Mr. Clerk.
Nothing from the Clerk's office, just happy to be here and to echo what Ms. Hosshihara said. Merry Christmas, since this is our only December meeting, so hope you all have a Merry Christmas.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This time we'll have public comment. I have three speaker cards. If there's anyone else desiring to speak during public comment, please see Mr. Tomachak in the back, and there'll be a time at the end of the meeting where you'll be recognized. You'll have up to three minutes for any topic of your choice. We'll begin with Randy France. Sir, when you approach, if you'll push the speak button once, it will turn on with a red light indicating.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Randy France, and I'm the Senior Vice President of Operations for MV Transportation. And please pardon me as I'm a little bit under the weather, so I apologize for that. MV Transportation is the largest American transit company, and it has been our great honor to be your partner here in Oaklusa for the last seven years. We greatly value our work together, our partnership, and this wonderful opportunity to serve the people of Oaklusa County. Our focus always is to deliver an outstanding passenger experience at a reasonable cost, and to do so by building the best local teams, supported actively by a deep regional and corporate team that ensures best-in-class practices, honed by hundreds of customers throughout our fifty-year history. These efforts have produced best-in-class service here in Oaklusa. On-time performance is consistently above goals. Safety is best-in-class, and our passengers are enjoying their service. We do this by hiring, training, and investing in a great team. This team has demonstrated a high level of employee satisfaction as we survey regularly, which in turns leads to excellent customer service. We take our partnership with you very seriously, and it extends beyond our contractual requirements. We have been an active member in the community outside of our services, from sponsoring the Destin Seafood Festival annually to our involvement with One Hopeful Place. Additionally, as your partner, we have assisted you in your comprehensive operations analysis, which included fixed route systems redesign, schedules and stops, and assisted you with your website refresh. None of this work for the benefit of the most vulnerable citizens of Oaklusa County would be possible without our excellent local leadership team led by John Bohannon, the general manager here in Oaklusa. This local team embodies MV's values of outstanding customer service and operational excellence, and our deep commitment to our passengers and clients. As we look at what we've done together, we not only honor the past, but we also celebrate the present and look ahead excitedly to the future with great purpose. Thank you for the opportunity to be your partner.
Steve Perry.
Good morning, everyone. Everyone, of course, knows me. I'm going to address a few issues and be short and sweet about it, but it's mainly about what I've been telling you since March, that certain aspects of your budget for the S.H. United States project have been way underestimated and everything. And I think the future agenda item on the thing will prove that, even though most of it is attributed to additional costs that occurred prior to the tow and everything like that, and not to the remediation process. At least that's what the report says and everything, but... Sorry. You're at, you're going to be, I'm sorry, the National Resource Team and Turf Development was asking for another $2.95 million. There's been many items on the thing. I've brought it up about the Coast Guard. Remember, the data tables and everything was the work that I prepared and provided to the conservancy. And this product and this data was submitted to you. Your county, the county gave it to your contractor, and your contractor submitted it to Coast Guard with their name on it without recognizing where all the work was done, which was work I did. And I think, but my information was clear, so that should have helped too. The board, as Mr. Goodwin has said, has made statements that are incorrect at times and everything like that. You guys have known there's eighty-four to over a hundred tanks, but, for example, you budgeted $750 for a marine chemist. Anyone that works in the marine industry like I have done for forty years knows that's an absurd low number, and it wasn't even close to being accurate. In addition to your insurance, that back on, I think it was August first of last year, you brought up about the insurance issues and everything to the county attorney, and the county attorney said you guys are relying on the conservancy's maritime attorneys. And of course, your hull indemnity insurance went from forty thousand to four hundred and five thousand dollars. So there's lots of things that were not accurate in the initial estimation for you and everything like that. But professionals who deal with this kind of stuff should have given you more accurate information at the time. And of course, based on the November twentieth letter from the captain of the port in Philadelphia to the county board and your coastal resource manager, they made it clear due to insufficient information provided in the tow plan and everything else, that's why the ship didn't leave, and you incurred additional cost related there too. This was not, which should not have been a surprise at all and everything for professionals doing this kind of work. This is not like towing a hundred-foot boat from Norfolk down to Destin. You know, that was a burned-out thing like Spirit of Norfolk. You're talking a one-thousand-foot ship that weighs thirty-two thousand tons of steel. That's if you put it on a weight. Don't go by the gross tons. That's a measure of internal volume for measuring operational cost and everything for a ship. So there's lots of things in this budget I've told you about, and it's not surprising. And this is only a small amount of money they're going to be, have to ask for, because none of it addresses the synchromit that we've addressed every month since March to this board, and you're not addressing that issue at all.
June Wolf.
Good morning. I'm June Wolf, longtime resident of Oaklusa County, and I'm kind of following along with what he was saying. I'm a former contracting officer for the federal government. And when I was looking at the revised costs, it was a shock to me. We, you awarded a sole-source contract to a contractor because of his familiarity with the ship, with the owner of the ship, and with the waterway. So it is kind of assumed that they know what they're doing. So the cost particularly, like he said, the indemnity insurance cost, I don't understand how they could be taken by surprise. That's one of the faults of doing a sole-source contract, is that you don't, you're working in a vacuum. Had this, and I don't know the details, forgive me, you know, had this been competed, because the sole-source statement did not say that they were the only source that could do it. Had it been competed, then something like this might have been brought up to light ahead of time, when if another contractor had seen that cost, it would have allowed for better assumption of cost, and we wouldn't be at this point where now, you know, we're kind of forced to do this extra money. So I appreciate you letting me talk. Thank you.
We have three visitors to recognize today. We'll begin with, number one, the recognition of Youth Champion of the Year.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. Excuse me. I wanted to take a brief moment to formally recognize and introduce your next presenter. Molly McDaniel is your Environmental Resources Coordinator. And as the county is an affiliate of the Keep America and Keep Oaklusa, or Keep Florida Beautiful, she directs all the initiatives with Keep Oaklusa Beautiful. She's done a fantastic job. She's coming up almost exactly on her six months with the county. She is joined here to present this next item with the Mayor J.B. Witten and a representative of Keep Florida Beautiful, Kaylee Heimier, who you may recognize. So with that, Molly.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to have a few moments to recognize Asher Gilery as Keep Florida Beautiful's Youth Champion of the Year for two thousand and twenty-five. Asher is a local high school student here in Crestview, and Keep Oaklusa Beautiful nominated her for this award earlier this year, and it was awarded in November at the Keep Florida Beautiful State Conference down in Coral Gables. This award is for young people across the state of Florida, and Asher was selected out of thirty-seven other affiliates here in the state for her work to reduce litter, educate her peers about the importance of recycling and plastic pollution, as well as generally beautify her community here in Crestview. Keep Oaklusa Beautiful is extremely proud to partner with her on several events, and we have another one coming up together this weekend here in Crestview on Sunday afternoon. Asher's work is achieved primarily through the Litter Locators app, which is a social media platform through Instagram where residents can identify and send photos of areas that are littered, so Asher and her team can go out to address that problem. We're extremely proud of Asher. Again, thank you for the time this morning to recognize her, and congratulations, Asher.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I see a microphone, so...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to say a few words. In the last year, Asher has been in my office several times, been in front of my mayor's advisory council, in front of the city council, has done a video with me, has done a cleanup on Wilson Street. She's just an outstanding individual, is doing a great thing, and came up with the program, got her students involved, and it's just amazing what she's done in our city, in the county, and I am so, so happy to see who gets this award from the state level. So thank you for the time.
Okay, good guys. All right, and I like three pictures. Ready, set, one, two, three. Again, one, two, three. Very nice. One last one. Thank you. And give me just a second. Come on batteries, and there you go. One, two, three. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
The Greater Fort Walton Beach Chamber of Commerce Chair, Gordon King. Yes, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners. It's an honor to be before you today, bring up a subject of discussion that the Greater Fort Walton Beach Chamber of Commerce would like to ask for your consideration. In addition to the Fort Walton Beach Chamber of Commerce, which I happen to be the chair of in two thousand and twenty-five, with our CEO Ted Corcoran is with us today. Also, in support of a renewal of the SRTAX, are with us today Asandra Wilson from the Crestview area. Also in support of a renewal of the SRTAX are with us today, Asandra Wilson from the Crestview Area Chamber of Commerce. Shane Moody with the Destin Chamber of Commerce is unable to be in attendance today. Tricia Brunson with the Niceville Chamber of Commerce, CEO there in support of this initiative. Nathan Sparks and Nick Dzinski with the One Okaloosa EDC are here today with us. And then Melissa Garza with Emerald Co. Association of Realtors are here in support with the Greater Fort Walton Beach Chamber of Commerce. And what I'd like to do, I have some slides I'd like to present to you today just to kind of remind you of the successes that the SRTAX has benefited the Okaloosa County and some of the municipalities that are receiving some of those benefits from that half-cent SRTAX. Starting off in 2018, when the citizens approved the referendum to initiate that half-cent sales tax. It's the last seven years, we've seen tremendous progress and changes in Okaloosa County as a result of that. And with that today, one of the first things that we want to talk about is the military readiness that the SRTAX funds are helping to achieve. As you can see, there's been a lot of discussion and there's current consideration on extending the roadway between the West Gate and the Connector Road on Highway 98, which our SRTAX dollars would be used for. In addition, the SRTAX has raised more than $136 million, bringing that to Okaloosa County. And we can see the results of what you've done with those funds. In addition, those funds leveraged matching grants of over $279 million. So taking that money, going out and receiving grants, you've actually leveraged that $136 million, turned it into $279 million, and we're seeing the results of those efforts. The funds have been used to pave over 200 miles and stabilized 200 miles of county roads in Okaloosa County. Without that, that work probably would not have been done. You would still be using maintenance dollars to take care of repairing those roads instead of replacing them. You have a Citizens Oversight Committee that monitors the projects and the expense of those funds. So citizens are in direct, working with the county on that, the staff on that, to making sure that those funds are being utilized properly and meant for the purposes that they were, they were assigned to do. To date, there have been over five major road projects have been completed with the results of those tax dollars that you've used. Seven environmental projects and flood reduction projects have been completed. So in addition to road projects, you've done things to maintain flooding, control erosion and help the environment. Let's not forget that more than 56% of those tax dollars have come from the tourists that visit Okaloosa County and utilize the facilities that we have here as citizens as well. So every summer, they come, spend their money, and they're helping to repair and to replace, improve that infrastructure that we as citizens have the benefit of using. To generate the same amount of revenue that the taxes have brought to us would require you to increase property taxes 19%. And we know that probably would not have happened. So we can see the advantages of having that sales tax in place and the results of what you've done with those funds. And lastly, the SRTAX is helping to save lives. The newly installed countywide communication systems provides for all police, fire and EMS services to access each other through a single network, enhancing communications and response times. We see the results of that. The Sheriff's Department sees the result of that. Local fire municipalities, fire departments and police are all able to communicate. It makes a great opportunity for them to be able to respond to emergencies as they occur on a more responsive basis. And lastly, our request to the county, and I'll end with this, is to ask you to consider adding the renewal of the half-cent sales tax to the 2012, November 2026 election ballot with a 10-year renewal term, which would start in January of 2029 and run through December of 2038. And with that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the time out of your schedule and everyone that came with you to be able to show how important of an issue this is. What a blessing it is to our county to experience.
Thank you for the opportunity. Yes, sir. Have a nice day.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. King, I just really want to thank you on behalf of the Fort Walton Beach Chamber and all the chambers. That's a very strong statement that all the chambers have come forward on this. What a difference this has made. There, with the first four years that I was a commissioner, I had so many people call and say, I need this done, I need that done. I said, put it on the list. And we had no hope of touching it. I know Public Works Director Jason Autry, who's now our deputy, could verify. It might have been 10 years before we could have gotten to it, seven years. We've been able to do so many things and move forward way beyond that. And as you so rightly said, tourism pays for over half of this. So thank you very much for the time that you came forward, the leadership that you bring to the chamber, and that all the chambers have spoken to this. It makes our case stronger as we go to the voters. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. And just to say that, you know, as a business community, we've seen the results of what you've done. We realize it takes years of planning for the staff to put these projects in place. And so that's one of the reasons we're back here today, asking you to renew that tax for another 10 years.
Very grateful. Thank you.
Mr. Power?
Mr. King, thank you again for, for doing this presentation. I think it's really important for people to understand that 10 years ago, whenever we were first pursuing this as a county, I wasn't here, but some of, some of us were and, and we didn't have, you know, we just had to trust us. You know, we just had to say, hey, we, we're going to do this. These are the wonderful, you know, projects we're going to do. And you just have to trust us because we don't have any track record to point to. Now we have a track record and I thank you for pointing that out. I also want to point out that, you know, I'm a numbers guy and, you know, you say 56% is paid by the tourist. That's extremely important. And then when you consider the matches as well, it's really only 20% that's paid by the locals that, that go toward these projects. And we beat all of the estimates and expectations and we're, we're able to continue to do just great things with stormwater and with infrastructure, things that we, you know, like, like Commissioner Ketchell just said, we would not have been able to touch if we did not have this resource available to us. So thank you to you, thank you to the other chambers and Ecar and everybody else that has written letters of support for this. It's extremely important for us to, to continue to, to serve the community in the best way that we can. And thank you for your support.
Yes. Mr. Cox?
I just wanted to thank you, Mr. King, for pointing out, for the public's benefit, what it means for us to, to voluntarily take this on as a county. Our voters voted for this to, to improve the roads and infrastructure and all the other things that come with that, that, that what it means, you know, for us, even if that sales tax wasn't enough money to complete a certain project, what it means to match those funds with the grants that our teams are able to apply for when we have those matching funds is a, is a, makes, you know, a, a tiny seed sprout into, you know, a full-blown tree. I mean, it's, it's such a huge gift to yourselves as taxpayers to, to opt in for that tax that is mostly paid by our tourists, our visitors, to be able to take those funds and match those with grant dollars, with state dollars, what have you, to, to grow into something that is just much more beneficial for all of our citizens to enjoy for years to come. And I appreciate you pointing that out because I feel like it's one of those things that's very difficult to intimate sometimes. So thank you for highlighting that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure you're aware, but in case others are not, administratively, the, the process, with you bringing it today to show such a, a community outpour and, and to give us the opportunity of, of bringing it forward. And at the first of the year, we'll put it back as an agenda item to be able to work out the, the language that will hit the ballot and solidarity between the commission to be able to move forward and, and have this as an, an item for the upcoming election.
Yeah, thank you for consideration.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next is the 2025 Maritime Landscape Preservation Outstanding Preservation Award presented to our Natural Resources Team. Yes, please. If you'll push the speak button. Thank you.
That's helpful, right? Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners and everyone else here today. My name is Mike Toman and I am the co-founder and the Outstanding Preservation Awards Committee Chair for the Northwest Florida Maritime Landscape Alliance for Preservation Incorporated, or just MLAP for short. I am here today with the president and co-founder of MLAP, Dr. Sorna Coxod Knight. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to preserving the rich maritime heritage of Northwest Florida, a region shaped for thousands of years by the Gulf, our streams, our creeks, our rivers, estuaries and springs. They are all connected regionally by the watershed and we are connected with it. Our mission is to ensure that the stories of the people that have lived and worked and thrived along these waters are protected and passed on to future generations. We do this through collaboration, supporting grants and local initiatives, and advancing long-term efforts such as establishing a national heritage area, Florida Florida Panhandle. MLAP is powered by an all-volunteer board representing nonprofit leadership, business, government, education, tourism, the arts, the sciences and research. Their combined perspectives from the Perdido River to the Apalachicola River reflect the broad community that cares deeply about safeguarding our maritime landscape. It is for this reason that each year, MLAP's Outstanding Preservation Award honors those who demonstrate exceptional leadership in protecting the cultural and natural resources of Northwest Florida. On behalf of MLAP, it is our pleasure to recognize a team whose work truly embodies stewardship, innovation and service to our region. This year, we are proud to present the 2025 Outstanding Preservation Award to the Okaloosa County Natural Resources Team. Under the leadership of Natural Resources Chief Alex Fogg, this amazing team has shown extraordinary commitment to coastal and maritime preservation, a commitment grounded in science, strengthened through community partnerships and driven by a bold vision for the future. Their efforts span beach restoration, artificial reef deployment, invasive species removal, sea turtle protection and the development of ecotourism programs that connect both residents and visitors to our natural heritage. And my son and daughter have participated in that program and they're snorkeling with the local experts and it's phenomenal. Since 2019, their work has placed Northwest Florida at the forefront of artificial reef development. 14 large vessels and thousands of tons of reef material have been deployed, with more to come, including the transformational SS United States Project, soon to become the world's largest artificial reef and a foundation of a future museum. Innovations like 3D-printed reef modules, 3D models online and interactive reef mapping tools are making marine science accessible to divers, students and the public. Just as impressive is their collaborative spirit. Students, nonprofits, businesses, researchers and volunteers all play a role in their programs. From lionfish tournaments and sea turtle patrols to planning the 410-acre North Shoal River Preserve. Their work strengthens ecosystems, enriches our heritage and empowers the community to protect the maritime legacy of Northwest Florida. And on a personal note, I can say from experience that this team is a pleasure to work with. And as a diver myself, I can't wait to plunge into the Gulf and experience the SS United States and its final resting place. It is with great pride that MLAP presents the 2025 Outstanding Preservation Award to the Okaloosa County Natural Resources Team. Congratulations and thank you for your leadership and dedication.
Oh, he's fine. That'd be better. Come on over there. Mr. Ketchell. One, two, three. One, two, three. And one last one. Hold batteries. And here we go. Good. And nice smile. One, two, three. Congratulations, Asher.
Commissioners, we'll move to the consent agenda. I'd like to suggest for whoever the motion maker becomes, as long as we have one, that item number seven is pulled from the consent agenda and moved to Department Business B. Ms. Hoshamara, directly after? Number one, okay, directly after number one. So we'll be moving it to number two in Department Business B, item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I have one additional request to remove. Item 13 for discussion.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Goodwin, last seven of 13, and a second by Commissioner Ketchell. Any discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with no? And that passes. Commissioner Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the understanding that item seven will move to Department Business, I'll address 13 if that's okay.
Yes, please.
With item 13, I understand what it is and that, that we're simply trying to update our, our title, Title VII nondiscrimination policies, which is obviously a good thing to do. But I wanted to suggest a, an amendment or a slight revision to the language. Let's see if I can get support for that. In particular, I'm looking at the portion of the, of the policy, and it doesn't have page numbers on it.
What?
I'm looking at the, I don't see page numbers on the actual document itself that printed out. So I'm not sure which pages. Anyway, there's a, let's see, it's about four-page. I think that's the PDF page number. It's the fifth physical page of the, I don't know why mine didn't print out with the packet numbers. That's interesting.
Is it the half-page with no header?
Yes, it's this page.
So it's page 194.
It's page 194 in your packets.
Yes, you found it. Exactly. Okay, so item number three on that page, I would let the first sentence of the, of the paragraph, I would move that we adopt the policy with the following revision to read as follows. "The county believes that transportation, infrastructure and access to private transportation is of critical importance to its public as access to healthcare, emergency services, employment and other essentials would be difficult or impossible without reliable transportation systems." So move.
So do I understand your, your amendment to be to, just to include infrastructure?
Infrastructure.
In that language?
Yes, so in between the words transportation and is, and I'm getting feedback, Nick. In between the words transportation and is, I would insert the new language, infrastructure and access to private transportation.
So I'll second for discussion, but I'm trying to understand why you want to do that. That's okay. I'm just wondering. Can you explain?
Um, yes, I'll tell you exactly why I pulled it. Same reason I was pulling item number seven. I believe that when we make broad policy statements, even in documents like this that are buried in what appear to be routine, you know, policy documents. This is a document that is making a statement of what the board is making as a, is deciding as a matter of policy is of critical importance to the board. And my concern is that as written, it creates an ambiguity as to whether or not the board believes that public transportation is deemed to be a critical asset that the Board of County Commissioners is obligated to continue to provide. And I think that's a fairly debatable issue and not one that I think should be decided in a nondiscrimination policy that's really not related to the ultimate topic of transportation. So rather... So rather than allowing that policy decision to be crystallized in a document like this, I'd rather reserve that debate back for the proper forum and keep this narrowed to the focus that it is, which really this is about making sure that there's Spanish-language notices available in other places. It's not the document to decide whether or not, you know, it's a core county function to provide public transportation. So that's why I would make the change here and allow that debate to be elsewhere.
Mr. Chairman, so I don't have any real objection to that. I just don't understand exactly how it relates to the access to private transportation. I mean, understanding why you would want to sort of not make policy that we think public transportation is critical, you know, or something that we should critically provide, I understand that. I just don't understand, how does the language that you're intending to insert specifically as it relates to the, I think you said availability of private transportation, access to private transportation? How does that relate to the providing the stuff in the language of the user, I guess?
I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Because the statement in paragraph three as it reads, "The county believes that transportation is of critical importance to its public", and it leaves ambiguous whether or not that means transportation provided by the government, or is that transportation provided by private resources? Could be nonprofits, could be churches, could be people's own vehicles. So what I was suggesting we do is, at least in this statement, clarify, which I think the board has previously adopted, a policy decision that transportation infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, things like that, are our responsibility, and we take that on. So that's why I wanted to clarify.
So, okay, so I think it clicked. So you're saying transportation infrastructure as one phrase, not transportation, comma, infrastructure? Is that what you're, okay.
Yes, sorry. Would you, would you read your change, proposed change, one more time? Turn your mic on.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so do you want me to, I'll read the sentence as it would be amended.
Okay.
"The county believes that transporta-" uh, sorry. "The county believes that transportation, infrastructure, and access to private transportation is of critical importance to its public as access to healthcare, emergency services, employment, and other essentials would be difficult or impossible without reliable transportation systems."
So I understand the clarification to be, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry, Chairman. I understand the clarification to be between stating that access to this information is, as in the way of infrastructure, is guaranteed by counties. Counties have to provide infrastructure. There, the clarification, as I understand it, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the county is not required to provide the transportation itself. Is that the clarification?
Go ahead.
I'll tell you, just as the, I guess as the drafter, the revised language, the intent was to clarify that, yes, as you point out, Commissioner, that providing the transportation infrastructure isn't our wheelhouse, to remain silent on what, in this document, as to whether or not we're deciding the county must provide public transportation and leave that debate for a different discussion.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Goodwin, it's a heavy day for transportation. There's going to be much discussion, I believe. Would you be amendable to, now, let me preface, if the federal government did not underwrite the vast majority of public transportation within Oaklusa County, I would not be a fan of having public transportation in Oaklusa County. And so there will be much more discussion to come, I believe. But would you be amendable to removing private so that we just had infrastructure and access to transportation?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I actually considered exactly what you're saying, and here was my concern. I am worried that if we make transportation, if we decide as a board that transportation, regardless of its character, is of critical public importance, we start to stick it on the shelf akin to a basic human right.
So that's an essential function of government?
Right.
With your permission, Chairman? With your permission, Chairman, may I make a clarification for the public? Just so the public knows what Chairman Mixon is just is revealing here, or at least informing here, is that our public transportation in Oaklusa County currently is grant-funded. Yes, it's almost 100% grant-funded. So that, that liability does not fall largely on the taxpayer. So I believe that the worry and the concern is here. And they, and I welcome Chairman and Commissioner Goodwin to correct me here, is that if that grant funding were to disappear, and especially given the status of property taxes and what have you, that what our budget shortfalls may be moving forward, that that service may be impacted, right? So rather than coming back to our staff and having to deliver a bunch of amendments that would need to be revisited in this document in that case, we are hoping to shortcut that and just state what the county's actual responsibility is to you with taxpayer dollars, not the grant-funded dollars necessarily because they may go away. And that is beyond our control. Obviously, as a body of county commissioners, we do not get to decide whether or not that federal funding continues to occur. But I am certainly open to the correction on those points. I have misstated something.
Commissioner Goodwin, what if you move further down in that paragraph? And just begin at, after, in spite, in that spirit? Begin at the county defines as essential, and just remove everything above that. Ms. Fitzgerald is going to see if any of that language is required for some of the federal grants. But if it, if that would work, we'd just remove the first sentence and the section of the second.
If that would be acceptable, I would move, I would, I would withdraw my motion and make a new motion to adopt the policy less the first sentence of paragraph three on that page.
So I can't support this measure because, in my opinion, public transportation is critical. We have many among us who are blind, disabled, aged, who depend on public transportation. I'm getting a lot of feedback, Nick, a lot. So, and I do believe that this is out of line with the federal. We have to have, needs to say, critical, we need to support it. If Sheila, I mean, Ms. Fitzgerald, if you find that to be different, let me know. We most, we do pay probably a little over $100,000, maybe almost $200,000 for grants, but they're matched. And the federal government matches our transportation. I mean, it's been a wonderful partnership, and I don't see it going away. I can't imagine it going away because every community depends on public transportation, especially one that's as bifurcated as our area. So I'm not going to be able to support this measure.
Are you removing your second? So I have a motion for the change on page 194, paragraph three, to remove the first sentence and the first portion of the second sentence. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? It's four to one. We have one public hearing on today's agenda, which is a quasi-judicial public hearing to consider an amendment to the Alabama and Holmes Development Agreement. Ms. Hoshemara?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody here who wants to speak on this item? If you'll please stand and raise your right hand. Great. Do you swear affirm that the testimony shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but? Thank you. And Commissioners, now would be the appropriate time to disclose any ex parte communications you may have had. I see none.
With other than citizens, right? With other than citizens?
Oh, no, even with citizens.
Oh, I've had numerous discussions and telephone calls and emails.
And however, that doesn't affect your ability to vote on this matter?
It does not affect my ability.
Great. Thank you. With that, turn it over to.
Thank you.
You, thank you.
The staff presentation will be by Ms. Christian Schell, Growth Management Director. Now push the speaker button. Yes.
There we go. Hi. Good morning. This is a request to an amend an existing development agreement that was adopted in 2023, sort of on the tail end of a rezoning application. And since that time, the project has matured, and the applicant has come further along in his engineering design and sort of analysis of the site. And so they are requesting that we amend some of the development standards that were included in that original development agreement. This is a public hearing. We did send notice out to 300 feet property owners, certified mail. We also had a planning commission public hearing where the change was recommended for approval unanimously to you. The applicant's representative is here today. If you have specific questions about why they are making the changes, he'd be happy to address those changes, or I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. In sum, they are requesting a greater height. It's the same number of units. The building location is proposed to be slightly different than the original agreement, but they are increasing the setback for compatibility as well as increasing the size of the trees that are to be put in to achieve some compatibility measure.
Thank you. Mr. Siner, did you desire to have an application, applicant's presentation?
Good morning, Mark Siner, Chalked Engineer, we're the agent for the applicant. Just to kind of explain a little bit further in detail why we're doing this. One of the things we've identified during the engineering of the actual plans to bring up for the county for development order is that we need more room for stormwater. So what we're basically doing is taking the building footprints, and we're reducing the size of the building footprints, which will increase the amount of open space that you'll be able to have for a view corridor and open that up for more stormwater and reduce the impervious area. So it kind of works hand-in-hand, less impervious area, less stormwater runoff, but also more room for us to actually put stormwater retention in. The only person who spoke at the public hearing was talking about the stormwater issue with, in regards to that, the lake that's there. And this will just help, you know, reduce the effect of what our impact of our site will be on the drainage in that area. Really, you know, going from a two-story to three-story building, I can't see over a three-story building anymore than I can see over a two-story building. So I won't, but like I said, the actual size of the buildings, and the one building we had was actually going to be kind of turned on an angle and be closer to the adjacent neighbors. We're eliminating that building altogether. So the buildings will probably be set back about 80 feet, which we were about 40 feet, so we've kind of increased that. And then the issue with the trees was, basically, if you look at it from a landscaping standpoint, you can't really plant as many trees as you want because they eventually crowd each other out. So we thought it would be more beneficial to, instead of, you know, increasing the sheer number of trees, to just basically increase the size of them when they get planted. So they'll be more mature when they get planted and then be able to become more mature quicker and create more of a visual buffer. And that's what the intent was, I think, to get that done. So all these things, I think, were done to improve the project and allow us to move forward with the final design.
And just to make sure that it's written in right, you're originally, you were set for a 40-foot setback, and you're changing that to a 50-foot?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no speaker cards indicating a desire for public comment. Is there anyone from the public desiring to speak to this item? Okay, this time we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, would anyone like to make a motion to approve or disapprove?
Motion to approve.
And I'll second for further discussion.
Mr. Goodwin's in your district.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll support the motion and the extension of the development agreement. Obviously, when you look at the site aerial that's here, there's four homes, single-family homes, that are going to be directly impacted as adjacent neighbors, and many, many more homes that, you know, are subject to the concerns about stormwater management and flooding. I feel confident that with, you know, with the engineering and stormwater management practices we have now, that even though, you know, there's a new project going in, the system will be engineered in such a way that it actually reduces the impact that the site currently has. It's my, it's my optimistic suspicion about that. And I think it will. But Mr. Siner pointed out something that I wanted to use this opportunity as a chance to bring up to the board. He mentioned the lake that's next door. And I will tell you, that lake that's next door has been quite a source of consternation for this county for a long time. I think there's been some litigation. And just as a brief history, that lake is a borrow pit for the houses that are built around it. That's why it's a lake. My grandfather grew up in that area, going back into the 30s, and that was always just a, basically a wet one. And back in the 60s or 70s, somebody bought it and excavated it, back when you could do that sort of thing and used it for backfill. So now you have this lake. There is, there are folks that live on the little peninsula, it's not an island, that's out in the middle of it, that I believe got the property through a deed, through a practice that I kind of call loosely deed scavenging, where you go and find a developer of a parcel who has a leftover piece, like a common area, and say, oh, your husband was the, you know, the last president of this company that developed this property 40 years ago. Will you just give me a quick claim deed to it? And that's how you start to create a root of title. So I think that's how this property went from, all my life, that peninsula was vacant. And it was honestly probably non-taxed or taxed at zero as wastelands. And, you know, nobody paid taxes on it, didn't matter. Now people live on it. Now there's accumulations of debris and junk and other stuff. I get complaints about it. It's right next door to this project. I'm not blaming this project, obviously, but it's the next-door neighbor. And since, you know, Mr. Siner brought up the lake, I wanted to bring it up. The lake is, the lake has an outfall to our bayous. So that was put in years and years ago. We're trying to do an upgrade, by the way, with a legislative appropriation to upgrade that system and create some treatment. But that lake is, honestly, it's in terrible shape. Some of it's our fault. I'll be honest, we've had, our Clifford Street lift station has dumped into that lake more than once, so I'm not going to say that we're not a part of it. But the owner of the property has not been a good neighbor with us. Maybe that could change. I just think our board, I would love to see the board give our staff some authorization to work on ways to try and acquire that lake. That lake is incredibly important for flooding mitigation, and it is incredibly important because of its environmental impacts. It could actually be an amenity. And right now, honestly, I'd hate to think of what happened if you fell in there. You'd probably need some antibiotics. So I think we could do better. Maybe there's a way to work with the landowner through a process of either finding, you know, an in-kind trade of some property that they might be able to relocate to, or a purchase. It just seems like now would be a good time. And, you know, with the property developing, which is derelict right now, where that old church was, which will now be these new multifamily houses, that's going to get redeveloped, be nice and clean. It would be a great opportunity for that community to help the homeowners in that area. And also, like I said, just the environmental implications of having the county own that lake and be able to control it under our standards would be huge for not just that neighborhood, but also the bayous that it dumps into. So again, I went way off, probably way off topic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but I wanted to bring it up at this time. So that, I obviously support the motion and will vote in favor, but ask if the board would consider giving the staff at least some authority to explore how to acquire that lake.
Any further comment?
Well, I commend you for bringing that up, and I'm certainly in support of that. We talk about environmental improvements, and that certainly would fall into that category. So thank you for bringing it forward.
All in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously? Is there consensus or? Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Is there consensus or Commissioner Goodwin's motives for the lake? Okay. Mr. Trossin. Moving to department business, Mr. Coffey.
Heavy day environmentally.
Definitely a heavy day environmentally. And speaking environmentally, I'm here to present the Pine Hills Carbon Storage Facility as a discussion item and potential action item. Let me discuss it a little bit for the general public and kind of orientate you. You see a location map in front of you. There's approximately 74,000 acres that is currently under lease by Reliant. And what is proposed essentially is to capture essentially of air emissions, liquefying that, shooting it down a stainless steel pipeline, and injecting it in a facility located within that bubble right there. What does that mean? Well, there are short-term implications and there's long-term implications. Long-term, it has the potential to cause a host of cascading events that could affect us dramatically in our county. And those cascading events range from seismic activity to contamination of groundwater. So if you think about groundwater, you have the Yellow Rivers, the Shoal River, and the Choctahachie River, which feed our estuary systems. We also have the majority of our drinking water, which is, you know, produced and shipped southward. So it has potential for there. So if you think of those cascading events, and it may be something that never happens, but then again, it could be something that happens and you don't know about it for many years until people start showing up in various, some of these ill effects of cancer and other things in well water and stuff like that for our folks of Laurel Hill, and then as you go southward. Obviously, it, it, it's only been done a few times. It looks like it's not a common thing that happens around. It is in Decatur. Some of the backup information, there are some studies on seismic activity that we provided you some reference. And this, this is just the start of some of this research, depending on what you guys want to, direct us to do today. We know that the Walton County Commission has already wrote a letter of opposition, and they've cited some concerns there. Carbon monoxide, obviously, is the oldest gas. It can, you know that from car emissions and generators, people die in their houses, and that could be something that oozes out. And it, it could be something that happens, not, not initially, but happens over time. And obviously, when you investigate a project like this, you cannot go down in that cavern and make sure it's completely impenetrable, like you could, other things, like you could a tank, a water tank or other type of facility. There, there is some opposition for it already in the state side in Alabama. Our governor has spoke out in this and, and I provided a comment in there about what the governor said about it. And he is, he is basically, not so much called it quackery, I don't want to misquote him, but there's, there's a quote in there of a statement attributable to him. And there was actually a bill in Florida proposed last year by someone proposing, a proponent of this. So, so you have two sides of it. There's a full study online of their proposal from Reliant. It's more of a glossy PR piece, but it'll give you some additional background information. There's a lot to take in here. There's a lot to consider here. There's a lot of science involved in this discussion. So we just wanted to bring it to the forefront. We've had some citizens come forward to some of you as commissioners. And the best way to start is, since sunshine law, is start the discussion right here on the dais. And so that's what I'm here today to present to you.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey. Just, just so that we pointed out, for those that aren't looking at a map, in the northeast corner of the county is closest to my district pretty strong. And if you take the, the, the size of, of impact that they show, you're a stone's throw to the Yellow River, but you include several offshoot creeks. And then you're, you're right in the Pee River through the middle there. And the Pee River goes over to the east to the Choctahachie River, which, which both come into the two bays that we utilize the most. And so it would be almost Bill Lundy Road all the way to the state line and over to the Walton County line. So quite a, quite a large area of territory. Just, just as the district personnel, my suggestion would be that we take extremely strong opposition to this, and we make that known as publicly as we can, not just here in Florida, because that's not where it's going to be given permission, but we take it to our federal lobbyists and, and seek their opportunity to work this item. Commissioner Goodwin?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And of course, as Chairman points out, this is on the doorstep of his district. And, but I, the way I understand it, it has potential implications for all our districts and multiple counties in Florida. Just, you know, Craig did a great job in, in kind of explaining it in deputy county administrator speak. But the essence of, of what they're proposing, if I understand correctly, is effectively, this company wants to take industrial waste emissions from industrial plants in Birmingham and elsewhere in North Alabama, and pump it down and pump it into the aquifer under Florala. Effectively is what they're wanting to do.
Correct. It's my understanding is the depth of approximately 3,000 feet. Our wells, you know, go 600, I mean, they can go pretty deep. And they have heavy metals and stuff in them too, when they capture some of those air emissions, or a lot of bad stuff in them too, that we haven't discussed.
And I think, I looked at that, that piece from the company that you mentioned on the website. And of course, you read that, you're actually confused as to whether or not it's a, it's an energy, an energy generation project, but it, but it's not. It's, it's basically, it's just a dump, right? I mean, it's creating a dump.
Yeah, you're trade, you're trading air emissions, which are bad in certain rights too, for ground emissions. And so you're taking in, essentially, you're saying, instead of doing it this way, we're going to pollute a different way.
Right.
Instead of trying to address the underlying pollution itself.
But it's sort of like saying, I've got some garbage in my yard, and the way I'll clean it up is I'll put it in my neighbor's yard.
That's correct. We'll ship it south to, yeah.
Okay. I, I mean, I, for one, I think that the chairman is spot on that we need to, that we need to do more than just a letter of we don't like this. I think, you know, a strong letter to multiple interested levels of government would be important. But I also think that, yes, one, our federal lobbyist, I think, two, to the extent we could get our state engaged, would be helpful. And we have state lobbyists that could help us bridge some of that as well as we can also reach out to our, our, our state officials. I think that would be helpful because, you know, we're one county, and of course Walton is, is involved as well, but the state has many more resources that they could assist here. But also, I'd like to empower our county attorney's office too, if the board would be agreeable to this, because for this project to happen, they've got to go through a regulatory permitting process, probably state and federal. And I think that we're enough of a stakeholder being next door to the project that we would have standing to participate perhaps in both the federal and state permitting process. And so I, I would love to see our attorney either directly or through associating, you know, counsel that does this sort of thing, represent us before the agency in Alabama and the federal agency to, you know, to oppose this, which may include, you know, you know, there may be evidentiary hearings and stuff like that that take place at the administrative level. But I would say, you know, let's, let's pull out our arsenal and let's try to defeat this. Because as Craig pointed out, I mean, they're talking about, you know, this isn't, you know, a little capped or tanked place where they're going to store some stuff. They're 74,000 acres of land that they're going to pump this down under. And then, of course, it hits the aquifer, and that's not going to stay just under that property. I mean, that's a fluid. And I know on the, on the website, there's every assurance in the world that nothing can go wrong. I think a company called British Petroleum said that once. And you know how that turned out. So anyway, that said, I just wish, you know, or I hope we can have the consensus to, to empower, you know, everything the chairman said, and then ask our attorney's office to, to, you know, also represent us at the regulatory level for the, the federal and state of Alabama level, since that's where it'll be.
Is your suggestion up to proposed litigation if necessary?
I would think so. But of course, you know, I would think along the path that, you know, our council could come back to us. And frankly, there might be, you know, efforts that where we either join in with, with our sister county Walton, or even the state of Florida in something like that.
Commissioner Cox?
Thank you, Chairman.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cox, just a moment. Was that a motion?
It sure can be.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. It just blows my mind. I've been, I've been receiving emails about this for some time now. And it blows my mind that the, the best location for this, I wouldn't be a fan of this in any location, to be honest, because I've worked with Forever Chemicals before. Many of you were present, you know, for, for me telling, you know, one of our public comments speakers that I previously was hired to help cure a C6 pond. For those of you don't know what that is, it's hexavalent chromium. It's the stuff that Aaron Brockett movie was based on. And those forever, that particular forever chemical, which is used to clean most pistons in factory settings, is a known, like, automatic carcinogenic. Like, you're probably going to get cancer if you have any exposure to it at all. So in any location, I wouldn't favor this particular method of redispensing those chemicals. But, but it blows my mind that the, that the chosen location is less than 100 miles from the Gulf. I just, I mean, and the demonstration is that it's going to go into a saline aquifer. So anything that we can do, I mean, including if we are able to engage at any level with our congressman to help fight this, I, I would fully support. I'm going to fight it.
Mr. Ketchel?
Yep. We've been down here waiting. So, yeah, this is, I've had lots of conversations about this. Our state legislature is already engaged, and you've done a great job. Thank you so much. From the moment I brought that to your attention as well. Our aquifer is the envy of everybody, and everybody wants that water. So we have to protect that aquifer. And I know that we'll just get federal, state, local engaged. I think this is going to be a partnership throughout the panhandle. Really, I think we can get all of our counties involved in this. It's appalling to me that they'd even consider this, but they've got to put their waste somewhere. And if we had been asleep at the helm, they might have gotten away with it.
That's right.
But thanks to some of our citizens, and I really do want to shout out to the citizens because they were the first to bring it to my attention. And I didn't think it was going to be this serious. And as I got into it, I could not believe it. I'm appalled that Alabama wants to do this. So everything you've said, Commissioner Goodwin, everything you've said, Mr. Cox, I agree with. And I hope we move forward with this and up to litigation, everything that it takes. We need to open fire on this. This is really, really serious. Because as you said, it's not just the water. We could end up having, like, seismic activity. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. One of the benefits of going last is that there isn't much that hasn't been said about this. So thank you guys all for your engagement on this. I also want to echo the, to commending the public. I've been contacted about this, and that was what brought it to my attention in the first place. I'm like, no, that sounds like a terrible idea. There's no way that's happening. Sure enough, it's happening, right? So, so, and, and also, you know, just a little bit of encouragement. My understanding is that this project was initially supposed to be further north in Alabama, where the geology was, is even better for this, for this type of project. And, and it was, it was successfully defeated and moved to, to sort of right next door to us, which is bad for us, but it does show us that there's some precedent for fighting this. And so I think it's really important for us to, to as strongly as possible, like, like you all have said, with, with every tool that we have available to us to fight this. It's, it's, you know, you can put it down as deep as you want to go, but you can't, you know, the, unfortunately, the, the water, the liquids don't obey, you know, boundaries that were set there by, you know, just on a map or whatever. So just, just the fact that they're doing it in Alabama doesn't mean that it's not going to drift into our aquifers through lateral contamination. And so it is a threat to our, to our health. It's a threat to the, you know, it's a threat to our environment. And I think we do everything we can to fight it as strongly as we can.
Before this location came out, there was a meeting discussing Shoal River Ranch. And the meeting did not go well. We never heard from them again. But it's, it's unfortunate that some would look where they are now. So we have a motion in a second. Further discussion, all in favor, signify with a aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. It is about 13 minutes till we're going to break until 10 o'clock. It is about 13 minutes till we're going to break until 10 o'clock.
We'll begin back with department business. With Sheila Fitzgerald, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning. I have two companion items for the board's consideration today. The first is to ask the board to approve a new contract for transit services effective January 1. The current contract with MB Transportation expires on December 31, 2025. And this contract is brought forward following a request for proposals process that began this summer. Special Selection Committee members met in October to evaluate, score, and rank three proposals, and MB Transportation, Inc. was ranked the highest. Staff has worked to negotiate a new contract for your consideration, for which service hours are based upon a slight increase in fixed route hours to reflect the addition of fixed route service in Crestview, and a consistent number of pair transit hours. The hourly revenue rate is approximately 13% higher than the current rate for 2025, which reflects negotiated collective bargaining agreement rates of pay through 2029. We estimate that the annual general fund contribution for years 2026 to 2030 will be approximately 200,000 to 300,000 per year. I'd like to bring to your attention a correction on the agenda memo, bullet number two, should read pair transit services remain at 34,000 hours. The contract is correct and referenced the 34,000 hours in pair transit. Should the board wish to move forward with the contract, the second item is approval of a lease agreement for the county-owned vehicles. I'll take any questions you may have.
Commissioners, their motion?
I'll make a motion for approval. This is, I really appreciate MB's work. Those of us who lived through the earlier fits and starts really appreciate the professionalism of MB and the work of Aaron Parker. He's done a fabulous job. He brought a lot of professionalism to this position, and we've got a very successful program. And I know that that's a chunk out of the budget, but when you look at all the federal dollars we get, it's well worth it.
Motion and a second, and discussion. Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm certainly not in a, a position where I'm ready to vote in support of this. I've got before me a, an audit report that was generated by the Inspector General's Office from the Okaloosa County Clerk of Court, auditing a, a period of time of the transportation system under the contract. And there's some, there are some findings in that audit report that caused me some grave concern. And one of those, I'm, I'm looking at the audit report right now, and on the second page, under the executive summary, I'm looking at key findings. And I know that there have been some discussions back and forth between our staff, probably the contractor, and the clerk's audit team. But one of the findings that causes me great concern, and I, and I don't want to put a clerk on the spot, but I would like to confirm, this key finding, and I'm reading directly other report, the county had insufficient contract oversight, which allowed noncompliant contract alterations that contributed to overpayments exceeding $850,000. Is that a finding that the clerk's office has retracted?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So, if, that means that there was a, you know, at least from our auditor standpoint, a significant noncompliance. And I've, and I'll, you know, this isn't, I've looked at this, I've had the opportunity to talk with staff about it. But one of the, you know, one of the dilemmas that I'm faced with is, my understanding is that we have not taken any steps at this point to recover the $850,000 of overpayments. Now, I understand the backstory on how it developed, but here's the, here's the issue. The, the five of us were hired by the citizens of Okaloosa County to serve in what I view as a fiduciary capacity. These are not $850,000 of my money. Frankly, they're only the county's money in name only for the benefit of our public. So, these are public dollars, no different than if someone looks at their, their, their financial advisor, or their accountant, or their attorney, or their banker as a fiduciary. I mean, I think if any of us went to our, went to our bank and our, and our loan officer or our account officer said, "I'm sorry, I gave away $850,000 of your money," the first question we'd say is, "What have you done to get it back?" And I think that's a fair question for the public to ask us as a board. What have you done to get our money back? And the answer, if someone stops you on the street today, is going to be nothing. I've done nothing. I have not done anything to recover your money. Except, considered continuing the relationship as is, with no accountability for that. Now, I don't think we can move forward in, in another contract until we've addressed that, that, that problem. I mean, look, if it's $8,000, it's an issue. It's not going to break the bank. But this isn't 8,000, it's not 80,000. $850,000 is a lot of money. And it's a lot of money to, to, to not attempt to work something out or to pursue it. I think as a, I think we have a fiduciary duty as, as a board to first attempt to negotiate recovery of the money. But if that fails, I mean, I think we have to pursue our legal remedies. That's enough money that justifies it. It really does. And, and that's the feedback I get from, from constituents. Maybe others have heard differently, that, that folks out there don't care about the 850,000, but that's not the feedback I've gotten. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the overall management of the program. I do agree that my, my complaint levels have changed from what we were seeing under the prior provider as far as level of service. But the reality of it is, I still see the exact same problem that I saw and that I was told about on my original campaign trail back in 2013. I can't tell you how many people at different events would say, "What are you gonna do about the buses? Why do we drive buses around with no heads in the seats? What are we doing? Why do we do it?" And I understand there's a, there is a multi-layered answer, one of which comes with, "It's just federal money, so it doesn't matter. We can just spend it." Well, that, that may be what we've been doing. I don't know if that makes it the best option. And I understand the $850,000 overpayments are actually related to those trips where nobody's in the seats that people have been complaining about. Because my understanding is, is that, that the contractor wanted to be paid for time when no one was in the seat and, and didn't come back to the board, but staff approved that, and that's where these payments come from. I think they're called deadhead runs, meaning that, you know, you've got the empty bus. So, I, I still see that problem. I, I actually, I was personally saw just the other day, and I shared a copy of the picture with, with Mr. Tomacek. Two buses sitting at the Santa Rosa Mall. Nobody on them. Two guys, the driver, standing under the awning of the old Sears building. Maybe they were waiting to do something. Maybe they were wait, you know, I don't know. They can't be taking, and taking many people to the Santa Rosa Mall. There's nothing left to go there for, unless you're going to Planet Fitness. So, what were they doing? I don't know. But that is probably what we're paying all this extra money for. The bus is sitting at the dead mall with a deadhead run while the drivers aren't in the bus. Is that, is that the provider's fault? I can't say that it definitely is. I think it's the whole program's fault. And maybe what the, the provider may be doing exactly what they were asked to do. They may have gotten those payments because we told them at, at staff level, "Submit the bill, we'll pay it." But that doesn't make it proper. And I don't think that I'm comfortable entering into another long-term contract to continue the process just to keep doing the same thing when I've seen no fix. We've also got the issue of, of the lack of insurance compliance. That's also in here. I just found out that within our insurance requirements, one, we don't have full copies of the policies that are supposed to be indemnifying us. We don't have, I can't go to my staff today and say, "Tell me the coverage exceptions that are going to apply if there's a disaster in one of the buses that will make this county liable and without coverage." that will make this county liable and without coverage. I don't think anybody here can tell me that because we don't have the policies. We're supposed to, but we don't have them. I also found out that we may be looking at a company's self-insurance up to five million dollars of uncovered risk. That means that if the company isn't good for it, maybe they are, maybe they're not. I don't think we've audited their financials. I don't know how strong or not strong. I don't know. I don't know if who we're doing business with is a mere subsidiary and not, and maybe a very narrow pocket of their overall book of business. So is a five million dollar self-insurance coverage threshold from a private provider sufficiently covering the risk to the people of Okaloosa County? In other words, if up to that five million dollars, if there's a claim where the county and the provider are jointly responsible or the provider is supposed to indemnify us, if the provider can't make good on the claim, the five million dollars will come from the taxpayers. Is that me exercising proper fiduciary oversight? I'm not sure that it is. So therefore I can't vote for this contract that's just going to perpetuate the same thing. Honestly, I think that where we need to go as a county, I have been optimistic. I've been in office for a lot longer than our current folks who are trying to work on this system have been there. And what I finally realized, it's not that the people we hire or the contractors we work with are doing something intentionally wrong. That's not what's going on. The problem is, the minute they took on the, the, the task of trying to make these buses work in Okaloosa County, they started out on something that can't be fixed because we've tried and tried and tried again. And we keep coming up with the same result. And this report just shows it. All these past five years, I thought things were great. I didn't realize I was just ignoring the problem that was hidden under the surface. And the IG's office found it. They flushed it out. And it's not something, I mean, look, it doesn't look good for me. It doesn't look good for the county. It doesn't look good for our citizens. But I could not say something about it. And that's probably the easier thing to do. Sometimes the right thing to do isn't the easy thing to do. And I think the right thing to do is we refuse to just carry on as, as a business as usual on this. And we take on the tough task of figuring out how to reshape that program. We've tried the idea of making the buses super efficient at the tourist corridor. It's taken far too long, years to get it done. A private company that wasn't subsidized by public dollars would have, would have stopped beating their head against that wall already. We've tried to make it a system where somebody could actually think about getting on a bus, going to work and getting home. None of us would do that on a regular basis because nobody wants to get off work and wait an hour and a half for a ride home. It just doesn't work. People don't do that here. There is a component of this system that's important that helps. It's the paratransit. The federal government has forced us to couple paratransit and fixed route systems together. In other words, you want the money for this, you gotta take on this. And the but, and the fixed route system just doesn't work. So I think we should be exploring ways to uncouple it. For years I've been told, you can't undo the buses. We took too much in grants. I've never seen a financial analysis of what it would actually mean if we got out of the program. Santa Rosa County got out of the program. And they haven't collapsed into a hole. What would it mean to get out of the program? What would it mean to reshape the program? Could paratransit be coupled into a, an enterprise department somehow? Or be an enterprise function where it's self-funded? Because paratransit can bill insurance, people can pay for a ride. Why can't, why can't we explore that? And that's running around a sedan car or a, a Ford Transit van versus these buses that we run around burning diesel and frankly, driving around with empty seats or sitting at the Panarosa Mall, uh, waiting for somebody to need a ride. I just think we should, before we extend this for five years or four years or whatever the extension is, that we should look at, um, look at what our real options are to try to make the system work. And again, I, I'm not, yes, there are some missed things along the way in different parts of our department and different parts of the providers, uh, you know, um, due diligence and keeping up with paperwork. I don't think any of it was intentional malfeasance at all. I just think the program's too big, too inefficient and too hard to manage as it is. And it doesn't matter how many federal dollars get thrown down here. It doesn't cure the fact that there's a problem. So with all these different issues, I just can't vote to just keep going on with business as usual. If there was some option to look at a, an extension of like six months while we explore what the heck we can do to try to restore this or try to make this program into something that is functional? No matter what that may look like, even if it's a decoupling from the federal program and coming up with a way to operate the paratransit, I'm okay with that. But I'm not going to vote and tell our folks, hey, look, you lost eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just take it on the chin and we're going to keep going on as usual. I'm not doing it. I'm not going to vote for it, not because I'm mad about it, but because it's my job. It's not my money. I can't choose just to look the other way because it's somebody else's dollars. So that's where I'm coming from on it. It's, it's not, I'm not, I'm not mad at anybody and I hope it doesn't come off that way. I just feel like the program, if we could fix the program, we would have fixed it. And maybe we need to rethink its shape. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Goodwin. I think you make a lot of really good points, but I want to make sure that there are some things that are understood. And Mr. Fitzgerald, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that the overruns that we had were specifically tied to the paratransit program and those deadhead hours that you were referring to was that, was that time from when the paratransit vehicle left the gate until they got to the door of the person they were picking up? And if that person wasn't there, then that would be deadhead round trip actually. And so it's, it's that specific time is my understanding is was the modification that staff made to the contracts. I don't know if there's anything. I mean, of course, you know, you guys are, you know, I'm not a legal expert. I'm not a, I'm not somebody who can say that there isn't a recourse for us. But if the contract was modified by our staff, then I think that's something that, you know, maybe we can't recoup that money. So I don't know that that's necessarily an option. But also I want to make sure that people understand that those deadhead hours are not the buses that are running around empty. It's the, it's the paratransits themselves, which I think that, you know, is, is an essential service that we, that we should look at providing. Also, you know, looking at your idea of, you know, potentially decoupling the paratransit from the rest of the services. My understanding is that EMT with ambulances, they, they, the billing isn't perfect on those either. And I believe that we lose money on those programs as well. And so, you know, even though that there is a mechanism for billing, I think that still signs us up for some potential liability that would be uncovered and we would have to look and see what that cost would be. I don't know what that cost would be. It looks like eight hundred thousand dollars is at least the deadhead cost of that where we would be paying somebody to drive those miles, whether or not there was somebody that was in the seat that was being transported through via paratrans, uh, transit. So, um, and you, you also mentioned no fix for it. Ms. Fitzgerald, for this new contract is, are those deadhead hours accounted for?
In the new contract, we added the provision that the contractor should only bill from first pickup to last drop off, which was a departure from what we allowed in practice and billing over the last seven years. And our reasoning for going back to that original standard was, you know, one, we, we do believe that there is a responsibility on the transit provider to be as efficient with their paratransit scheduling. In other words, you know, make that attempt for the, the length of time between when they leave the gate and arrive at their first pickup to be as, as sequential as possible. And so with that being said, we, we felt it was a best practice to go back to the first pickup to last drop off, therefore being as efficient as we can with taxpayer dollars.
And, and knowing the true cost of it because of the, you know, the, the, just the geography of the county being, you know, being separated by some military bases, which we're all thankful for, that causes a lot of, you know, a lot of extra miles to be driven and things like that. And so it causes some difficulty for programs like this. But in doing so, so, so it is back to first pickup, last drop off. Did they adjust their rates to account for that extra time that they're anticipating?
Thank you for that point. Yes, we also felt that because the contractor had been doing business in Okaloosa County for the last seven years, they had all of those statistics relative to deadhead hours at their disposal. We did make it clear that their rates should be reflective of understanding the geography of Okaloosa County and the number of deadhead hours that could potentially be associated with a paratransit service.
Thank you. And so my understanding is that, or at least my view is that these have been addressed. And that, so, so the, the no fix, I don't think necessarily holds water. Also, the, the, the fact that it's paratransit specifically, which is the driver for this, this overrun. Also, it's, it's important to note that that's over six and a half years or six, a little over six years of time. So not saying it's inconsequential. It's a lot of money. It's definitely something that, that, that is and is being and should be fixed. It's something that I, I agree with you. We are fiduciaries, but also I believe that there is an element of our public who absolutely relies upon this service that we provide, whether it be paratransit or the, the regular bus schedules. I believe that there are those who, who absolutely rely on it. And you say that, you know, I wouldn't wait for two hours for a bus, but there are those who don't have a choice. And so I think it's important for us to maintain those services. And, you know, again, it's not, it's not perfect. It's not, it's not something as a, as a conservative that I like to just throw money at. But there are some things that, that I think that we're, we're responsible for providing and that may just be a fundamental disagreement. That's okay. Good people can have different views on that. And so I respect your view, your view on that, but, but my view is different. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, so you made some very good points. Thank you for that, a lot of which we hear in the subcommittee for the transportation. I just wanted to know, do we know the number of the ridership both for paratransit in a year and regular? Do you have the numbers that you could share, me, Mr. Parker could? I think that would, and, and I, you know, following up on Commissioner Palmer before you say, you know, I look into the eyes of the disabled in that committee that we deal with. They absolutely have no other transportation, especially if they want to be independent adults. The aged, so many of our nursing homes use this, these, and thank God for it, you know? And it, and it is difficult because we do live in such a bifurcated county with two really separate, you know, roadways. But we're actually, this is, this service has really come up in the last 10 years since I've been here. We've really done a much better job. So do you have those numbers by chance?
Yes, ma'am. Like I said, both of the operations, paratransit as well as fixed route, like I said, we are, I know the fixed route operation, we were, this past fiscal year, we had fifty seven thousand passenger trips on a fixed route operation. And for the, uh, paratransit operation was around fifty two thousand paratransit trips.
A hundred thousand ridership. And, and, and you made a very good point about our EMS. We would never consider doing away with EMS. And yet many people can't pay for the insurance to cover those ambulances and we've had to pick up the difference. I, I just so desperately believe in, in transportation. And I know that, you know, there's been some glitches and we've had, that number sounds terrible, but we, we fixed that. We have fixed that. I'm sure the, we could talk to that as well. I hope that I have enough votes to see this continue because it's really been a stellar program for Okaloosa County. And I really do think a lot of, of the age of blind, blind and disabled depend on this. When you go to Publix or any of the grocery stores and you see the disabled bagging your groceries, how do you think they get there? Do you think their parents drive them? This is a wonderful thing that we're doing here. This is a way to provide services. There are many people who cannot afford a car anymore, insurance and all that it takes. This is the way they get to and from their work, their medical appointments and the grocery store. This is the responsibility of government to make a difference in the lives of those among us who are less fortunate. The numbers be darned. In this case, I side with the fact that we must do the right thing and I hope I have the votes to support this. It is Christmas after all, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Guys.
Thank you, Sharon. I, I have to be completely honest that I, coming into this job, I did not see the benefits that there are to public transportation. I too saw and, and might have voiced, if I had been a little more forthcoming, that I had concerns about empty buses and what have you. I, I cannot parlay to you enough what, what a burden it is upon each of us, five. Just what Commissioner Goodwin said, as your financial stewards of how to spend the money that, that you trust us with responsibly. However, in discussing these numbers with Ms. Fitzgerald and, and others, you know, certain things came to mind that, that could have, because most of the, the paratransit is responsible for, for these empty buses and what have you. Some things that came to mind, knowing that this is a five-year deal, five-year plan are that, you know, we're, we're going on six years from when COVID started. And nobody wants to revisit COVID, but the numbers game in just keeping places staffed enough to, to visit the numbers, you know, to visit where we might've been off on these contractual obligations and, and, you know, the offsets that happen when that's the case. I cannot imagine how many fatalities we might've had if we didn't have some kind of public transit getting our elderly and disabled who were the most affected during COVID to those appointments. Maybe they missed a bunch of them. I don't even want to imagine why they missed those appointments. But during those years, I can imagine, I mean, that was two solid years of people not being able to get enough people hired, people not being able to get where they needed to go. Gas prices were such that even if you had a car, many times you couldn't go where you needed to go. Particularly if it was, you know, to a, to a facility that had a respirator when others didn't. So I'm loathe to say that, that I think that forgives, you know, the misallocation of funds or the, you know, the lack of supervision on those funds during that time. But I, it's not that I don't understand why. I think most of us understand that every kind of business was impacted negatively during that time. It was hard for most of us to see where dollars were going precisely when we couldn't have, we didn't have the bodies at work to, to staff it, to staff managing those numbers, let alone the people. And we can't manage a patient's willingness to take transportation, whether they're unavailable because they're literally too sick to get out of bed because of COVID or whatever reasons. So I, I would support, and I don't know that I have any support in this, a middle of the road solution. I don't know that that can be done on the dais, but to, you know, to revisit this in a month to see if there is a, a plan that, or, or maybe even more information that could weigh more heavily on the hearts of those who would be voting this up or down. I, I would support, you know, if there's a way to do this by consensus, you know, tabling this particular item to next month for a healthier vote on the matter. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. If, if I may, since, since as Ms. Fitzgerald stated, the current contract with MV is set to expire December thirty first of this year. And our next meeting is what, January first, first or second week of January. We do have, just as a backup plan, a potential amendment to the contract that would, that would extend it for up to two months that MV has agreed to. However, it would be an extension of the current contract for up to two months, but at the rates that were proposed in the new contract. So Ms. Fitzgerald stated earlier, those rates were partly based on MV's negotiated, what was it? Collective bargaining agreement with, with their employees. And so, so they couldn't extend it on the current rates. But using the two thousand twenty six proposed rates, they could extend it for two months, which would allow the board to, you know, get more information, have more discussions or bring this up sometime in January. And, and the amendment would also clarify the paratransit deadhead hours that, that was discussed as well. And I'm happy to pass around copies of the proposed amendment for the board's consideration, if that's something the board wanted to do.
Mr. Chairman.
So. Do you want a second bite or is that?
I'm sorry.
You want, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just, yeah, I just wanted to say real, real quick, I, or just. I'm sorry. I just, yeah, I just wanted to say real, real quick, or just ask a question real, really quickly. What would the, what would the end end goal of extending versus versus just approving the new contract? What would be anticipated to do if if we think that the rates have already addressed the deadhead hours? And and I just don't know what, to what, to what end?
If, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Before Ms. Hoshara answers questions, let me have a couple of minutes and then and then we'll have her answer, if that's okay. Mr. France, thank you for for being here today. I'm glad that you came, glad that you spoke publicly, glad to get to meet you. Over the course of being on the commission, this has always been a struggling topic for who believes what should pay for which part. And then, just as you've seen today, as decision makers, it becomes this battle over perspective. Are we talking on behalf of compassion? Are we talking on behalf of stewardship? And if you look at those as two separate things, business versus compassion, for the compassion, should we be giving people a ride to the doctor's office? If that was the only discussion today, I think we'd have a favorable majority and we'd be moving forward. If we were stuck just on business, to say in in business, do we make six amendments with a company in their favor every time over the course of, I mean, if I went amendment by amendment, I think everyone in the room would see the drastic favor that the County Commission has given to MV Transportation for being able to operate this. If I looked at it on the business side to say in a in a business, do we pay for deadheads? Well, if this was a county-run operation, yes, we'd be paying that staff member both ways. Do we take that challenge when you're the contract holder? No, that's for you to take on. You knew that ahead of time. You stated how large your company is and how many places you're involved in transportation. You knew that there would be deadhead routes. And so that's a challenge of business, which is why we choose to do it outsourced rather than increase the size of employment in Okaloosa County. When you came to us and said, our employees are going to leave if we don't pay them more. You had negotiated the contract, you as a company had negotiated the contract, and and we knew that. But in good faith, we said, yes, things have changed a lot since COVID. We know you need more money, so we increased so that you could pay more, actually, five times we increased so that you could pay more. When we received funds, COVID money through the federal government, we didn't have to give it to you. But we chose to make some amendments so that you could pay your people who were not at work. And we did those things in good faith because we wanted to be good partners, we wanted to be good stewards, not only of the county resources that we have, but we wanted the services to be able to continue for the ones that needed it when things did come back to normal. So I think six times plus five increases, we've been tremendous partners. I'm hesitant to see us as a county move forward as a one-sided tremendous partner. And let me tell you what I mean by that. We have $800,000 that our clerk's office has done a tremendous job in showing us over the last six years that are in question. I'd like to know if there's any appetite on on the behalf of your business to come to some type of settlement agreement that that finds fault in part of that as yours, not strictly ours. Is there somewhere in the middle that we could meet? If not, then then I really think it shows a lot about the relationship here. And and it begins to point us in the direction of really questioning, are we in a relationship that that's two-sided, not just one? We've been tremendous partners. I'm really wondering if you're willing to be tremendous partners today. If not, I think I would hope that as a commission, we move forward into some type of month-to-month or what our attorney has spoken of, to be able to to kind of reevaluate what is in our best interest. We want to be good stewards financially, but we also have compassion. And we also see what should be essential functions of government. We also want to provide for the less fortunate. We want to be able to to do things that help our people, but not at the cost that's so drastic right now. If it's, I believe it would be okay for you to speak, if you're willing, on behalf of your company, is there an appetite to come to some type of settled agreement? Yes, sir. If you'll push the speak button. Sorry, it's off.
Thank you, Chairman. So of course, we too were disappointed in some of the findings. There were some issues noted that, when performed, were in the best interests of the passengers and met the needs of you, our client, that were in written form approval, that, yes, could have been documented more clearly at times. These issues predated our general manager, John Bohannon, and in his role. And I strongly believe, with his steadiness and experience at hand, we'll be sure to avoid those issues moving forward. So I acknowledge that the what was done was in written approval from the county. Could it have been documented better on both parties? Yes. Those are conversations that Sheila and I have had. With regards to the extension at the new price, we have real costs. What has not been, or what was not discussed today was there's a performance bond in the old contract. That performance bond was not in the proposal. So we did not bid on what that suggested performance bond. As your partner, we admitted three days ago that we will eat the cost of that performance bond and not include it in the new rates. So I feel that we are good partners. I respect being in Okaloosa County for the last seven years. We we are making a concession on a performance bond that was not included in the proposal, that we didn't want to renegotiate good rates as in good faith as a partner. So those are costs that MV is absorbing. So I I do feel, and I thank you all for the partnership the last seven years. I hope we can continue. I I feel that we do great things for the community and for those most venerable patrons in Okaloosa County.
Do you have a value, valuation of that performance bond?
I don't have it in front of me, sir, so I can't, I can't give it.
Ms. Fitzgerald, do you know a value of that performance bond? While you look that up, I have another question. You mentioned changing leadership, which is great to point that out. It was contracted that you would compensate the county when you took on changes of leadership then. I believe that was one of the findings, that you did not do that. If I may, did you not compensate the county at that issue because no one billed you or because you didn't know that it was there?
Because we had documentation clearly stating conversation, approval and a mitigation and a plan for those changes.
Okay. So it was okay to deviate from the contract in that instance?
That we had had conversation with our with our customer, our client, if you will, with regards to specific individual actions that were approved by our client. As in the situations that were approved, the other situations that were approved in writing.
And that gave us the opportunity of wavering away from the the contract. Just making sure I understand, right?
Yeah, I mean, just like the other situations that have occurred, we had conversation, we had approval in writing to go through this plan, and those plans were approved by our client in writing. But I appreciate your willingness to be your partner the last seven years, and we want to continue to do so.
Yes, sir. In private business, I would hope that you did because it seems like with a partner this willing to increase when necessary in the midst of contracts.
Yes, sir.
It's very, it could be very lucrative and beneficial to stay as a contractor. Commissioner.
I did have a question to follow up on on something. And I want, I'll reserve, if appropriate, some rebuttal on a couple of other points. But but the issue about the performance bond not being in the in the request for proposals. Ms. Hoshara, have you looked into that? And does that mean that we have a defect in the procurement? I'm concerned that if it was supposed to be in there, it's not. And now we've got a vendor who has now been selected and post award or post announcement, they're able to to negotiate an issue that every other vendor didn't have the opportunity to do, that we may have a spoiled procurement.
It is true that it was not, that the performance bond was not included in the RFP that that went out. And so so none of the respondents who submitted proposals included that as as part of, or none of them calculated that cost in their cost proposal that was submitted. And so given that MV is the current provider and had has the same performance bond in place now, staff reached out and said, you know, this is something that should have been in place. They agreed to to put one in place. And so so to answer your question, it's true, none of the other respondents had had included that in their cost.
Is the performance bond something that should be in the procurement?
It's not. It depends on the project, but a project like this, yes, yes.
Do we know how we would miss that? And I'm not saying that your office, I'm just saying, do have, do we have, this is the first I've heard of it. I knew about missed, you know, about us, you know, overpaying $850,000 and not doing anything to get it back. But I didn't know anything about this. This is just another layer of concern that I have on top of this growing problem. I just wondered if we had any more information on that.
I I don't, I don't know if Ms. Fitzgerald does. I know that generally speaking, and and I can't speak on behalf of the purchasing department, but generally speaking, you know, what they do is look at the last procurement that was issued, and then they update that. And so in the last procurement, it was included that a performance bond was required. I I can't say as to what happened where it was not included this time.
Is there, is there anybody that can answer that?
So I could be wrong, but I actually don't think that the $500,000 performance bond requirement was in the original 2018 procurement, but it was part of the 2018 contract. And when I was updating the contract for this new contract, I saw the performance bond and didn't recall seeing it in the procurement. So I brought it to Lynn's attention and and the contractor's attention. And they indicated that they would be willing to provide the performance bond at any that cost in, you know, good faith negotiating with the county for a new contract. So it was likely an oversight in 2018 and an oversight in this procurement that the requirement for a performance bond was not included.
But generally, the the draft contract is included in the procurement when it goes out. Although I haven't looked at the, I haven't gone back to look at the 2018 to see, to see if it was. Or if it, for something as unique as this, it's possible that that the form standard procurement wasn't included.
Can can I ask another question?
Yes.
What is the total value of the contract that is proposed for approval this morning?
So the amount that is in the agenda item is a little over 20 million for the five-year base period. And that is a function of the annual hours of 32,500 fixed routes and 34,000 paratransit times the rate being proposed for those hours.
Do we have, is there a termination for convenience on behalf of the county in the contract that's being proposed for approval today?
There's, there should be. There is in all of our contracts.
And what does that, what does that termination for convenience provide? If the board were to adopt this contract today, what would be the cost? And what would be the timeframe for the board to exercise that if the board were to elect to to use the termination for convenience to sever the relationship and go in a different direction?
So within 45 days written notice, there is a termination for convenience for the county. Is that what you're asking?
And what would the cost be?
I believe it's just we're required to pay whatever service they have provided up until the point that service concludes.
Forty-five days, and then we pay for services rendered? We don't have to pay for any demobilization or anything like that?
I do not recall any of that information within the contract. I mean, you know, the county owns all the vehicles, we own the buildings. It's just a matter of the drivers, you know, exiting.
Okay. Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Fitzgerald, can you tell us of that $20 million, how much of that is is allocated with federal funds or grants?
What I don't have the precise figure, other than to say that we have estimated that the county's local share from general fund dollars would be approximately $200,000 to $300,000 a year. So the remaining balance of the cost to operate the transit system is either federal or state grants, or it could be things like fare revenue generation. We sometimes will contract with entities that utilize the convention center to provide rides for those attendees to various places on the island or off the island. We used to be able to generate some additional advertising revenue on the buses. However, the state has limited our ability to advertise externally. But we are looking at, you know, various other opportunities to generate, you know, revenue for that system. One item that we're working on currently is implementing electronic fare payment so that someone could pay, you know, with their Apple Pay or purchase, you know, fares electronically. And that will be implemented, if not the first quarter of 2026, no later than the second quarter. IT is assisting getting that project implemented now.
And your best estimation would, would those mechanisms for revenue capture, et cetera, would that would that meet the $200,000 of public funding that is currently happening?
So the 200 to 300,000 is truly general fund dollars that is necessary to make that system, you know, whole on an annual basis. You know, there are opportunities to continue to evolve the system. Some of those were in your operational analysis that that was presented earlier this year. But we, you know, we could explore things like micro-transit, on-demand, other opportunities to, you know, to generate revenue within the county. And our, and our goal would be to continue to look at ways to minimize that general fund impact. But simply, you know, at the rates that we are paying, you know, for this contract to continue services and knowing that, you know, some of these grants do have, you know, a 5% share that we try to meet with fair revenues and other sources. But at the end of the day, there's generally, you know, a general fund, you know, contribution that is necessary to to make the system whole every year.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, if there's a 5% share requirement to to meet the grant funding or the federal funding, then our, then our, our taxpayers' contribution is going to be 5% anyway. Yes.
Well, I mean, it's it's hard to give you a precise because different grants, some are 100%, some are 5%, some may even be 10%. But not all, you know, require a match. So it's unfortunately, it's not a very simple calculation because your cost of your transit system on a monthly basis, they, they, they fluctuate, right? Because of ridership, the number of paratransit hours. And so it's just, it's hard to to give you a precise figure. We can certainly, you know, work on doing, you know, a little bit, you know, more in-depth financial analysis. But again, it's always going to be an estimate based on, you know, levels of service that we would expect.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So we, oh, yes, sir.
Just following up on the the dollar figure, because I I think that that the questions Commissioner Cox were asking are are very important questions about the about the general fund dollars. So if I understand correctly, then the way that this contract, which is being, which is being promoted for approval today, it would presuppose a commitment of property tax dollars from our citizens towards the buses of somewhere between 1 million and 1.5 million. Is that correct?
Sorry, if you were to estimate 300,000 max over a five-year period, you are correct.
So, and it could be more, right?
Could be more.
I mean, that doesn't sound like free buses to me.
So we have a motion and a second to move as presented. I would, just as as one commissioner, I would much rather see us go in a direction of giving time to to come to a negotiated settlement agreement with the the outcome of the study given to us from the clerk's office. I would, I would like to see some of these questions answered. I am not in favor of just stopping transit. I really want to see us work these things out as good, as good stewards. But we will move forward with the motion and a second if there's no further discussion.
Well, Chairman, if you want, I can amend to go with this idea. And then we'll give more time. I can count the votes. I see yours. I see probably Ms. Cox. So rather than So um rather than see it defeated, I'd rather go ahead and
If you're willing to do that, I'd love to have answers.
I am. I'm willing to do that.
Is that the second? It's good of all.
Yeah.
You were the second.
I'm for that.
It is. It's an extension of two months that um, the term of the original agreement is hereby extended on a month-to-month basis for up to two months. So my suggestion would be that we extend for two months. Is that?
Chairman, ma'am, may I make sort of just a, just a comment on that? So certainly willing to do whatever the board um directs us to do, I will say that with the holidays coming, you know, sixty days, you know, even if staff is is working diligently to work through any questions or concerns that you might have, and then as well as have time to meet with each of you to um to discuss this, that that those sixty days, um, you know, they're going to get here before we know it. And I think it would be helpful if the board decides to just move forward with the two-month extension to have a very clear um direction from this board as to what your expectations are for um when this comes back to the board. Um, you know, we've been asked some questions um relative to the health of the system, trying to um implement some, you know, tourism uh related uh service. And so some of those um larger homework assignments, I'm just not really sure can be completed in a two-month time. So I'm just a little bit cautious that we might just find ourselves back here in the same place in two months if we don't have clear direction about what the expectation is.
So m- my intentions, if if I may answer first, would just to see the amount that is uh negotiated within a settlement so that we uh we find uh fault on both sides and and we come to this partnership moving forward, uh knowing that we both have um uh equal skin in the game uh as we move forward, uh based upon the past, but giving us the right foot to move into a new contract. That that would be my expectations of that. Commissioner Goodwin?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it, I agree with Ms Fitzgerald. Uh, from my perspective, the lift that's going to be required to get, to get uh at least this, this one vote where it needs to be on committing to a five-year extension of a relationship, it's going to be pretty heavy for sixty days. Um, it would be, um, you know, I don't know if it's on the table during that sixty days to negotiate an additional sixty days with the, with the vendor to um, you know, at least try to get us four months of time to work with. Um, of course, they haven't agreed to that in advance, so we don't know that as we sit here. But I'll tell you the kind of things that I want to see. I agree with the chairman one hundred percent. I need a definitive plan and um understanding of how we're going to recoup uh the taxpayers' eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is um a threshold issue for me. Um, beyond that, I want to understand how we're going to have, I I want a strategic plan that can actually be implemented um with, with um accountability for accomplishing milestones along the way to get the system to where it is reasonably functional. That may include things like adjusting the rates, um, the point-of-sale things that you mentioned. I'm honestly not convinced, and and I think Ms Hochara and I talked about this in the past, I'm not convinced that the state ruling absolutely bars the advertising that we were doing before. I think there, I think there may be, um, uh, I think we may be taking a, an unnecessarily narrow reading. Um, and I'd like to dust that off and revisit it um and 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 look at the system as a whole. But the second most important, the most important thing is get that, you know, how much of that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the taxpayer money are we going to get back? That's number one. Number two, you got to demonstrate, I think, to this board that our internal active onsite management of this program is robust enough that I don't end up with another IG report that is this blistering. That's what's important to me. I just, I mean, you know, we all take culpability in this. It's not just staff. That's all five of us too. Me, I'm right here. I'm holding it up. I'm at fault. But if there's one thing I have, I've observed in my time in government, the public understands government will make mistakes. When the public gets upset is when government doesn't do something to correct it. That's when I think we end up in a real problem. So let's correct it.
Was that sufficient enough?
Sure.
Okay.
Chairman, I have one more question. Ms Fitzgerald, what is a realistic timeline for this? I mean, you said, you know, with Christmas, sixty days, I mean, so what would you like to see? Two months is pretty narrow.
I mean, I think the, the contractor has agreed to a sixty-month, uh, or sixty-day uh extension, you know, within that time, as Commissioner Goodman suggested. If necessary, we work, you know, towards a, an additional extension. I mean, I, I think if you're, if you're talking big changes, you know, to the system, I mean, that, that is something that, especially if you're looking at things like bringing it in-house, which I'm not suggesting we do, um, but those are things that can take six to twelve months. I mean, those are big changes. Um, you have to look at things like, you know, the liability insurance, how, you know, the grants would be impacted, um, staffing, hiring, all of those things. And so it just, just depends on, you know, the will of this board in terms of continuing a status quo with the, with improvements as necessary, or if you're looking to make, you know, big changes to the system. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just think in all fairness to staff, it's probably appropriate for me to say right now so you at least understand where I'm coming from. You do not have my commitment to budget on an ongoing basis, two to three hundred thousand dollars a year of taxpayer general fund dollars. Now, perhaps, working with the level of service that's in this contract and how successful we are in recouping the eight hundred and fifty thousand, that could go a long way to knocking down that one million to one point five million dollars of general fund dollars that would be required to be committed to support such a contract. But I just want to be honest with you. Come next budget cycle, I'm not going to vote to put three hundred thousand dollars up. Very unlikely I will support putting three hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer dollars uh uh property tax dollars into this system. So I just want to be honest about that upfront.
All in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Ms Kelly Byrd?
Good morning. Uh, I am here uh with Director Maddox um to ask the board to consider approval of the presented contract amendments to the collective bargaining agreement for two different fiscal years between um the county and the IAAP, which is a union comprised of full-time EMT and full-time paramedic employees in the county. Right now, we are in our second collective bargaining agreement uh with the IAAP, and that agreement runs through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, so we're in the last year of that agreement. Part of provisions of the collective bargaining unit are that there are different um articles that are allowed for annual reopeners, and that is what we negotiate in good faith uh with union representatives each year. For contract amendments for the fiscal year uh twenty-four, twenty-five, to give you a little history, the county's bargaining team and the IAAP were initially unable to reach um and resolve their differences uh during negotiations. And in April twenty twenty twenty-five, the IAAP formally declared impasse to uh PERC, which is the employee, uh Public Employees Relations Commission. Both parties participated in a hearing before a special magistrate on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And after that, um, representatives for IAAP accepted the recommendation of the special magistrate to move from the annual uh ensic leave program to the PTO program that the county is currently under. In an effort to avoid the cost of next steps in that process, which would have been an impasse resolution hearing and to provide funds for EMS employees before the Christmas holiday, both parties have reached an agreement to resolve the remaining differences to wages and leave. Uh, those differences would be, one, to move from the annual ensic leave system to the county's PTO program. And as far as wages, uh acceptance of the four percent cost of living increase that were offered to all employees in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, with a one-time payment of five hundred dollars per EMT and seven fifty per paramedics who were actively employed at that time. The second is the current year uh contract amendment for twenty-five, twenty-six. In November, we met with union representatives and we easily came to an agreement uh that both parties could uh, could uh come to, you know, consensus on about wages. And that was acceptance of the three percent cost of living increase that was offered to all employees in October of twenty-five. A one-time payment of two hundred dollars per EMT and two fifty per paramedic, and a one-time payment of a hundred dollars per EMT or paramedic who have worked over a hundred hours of unscheduled overtime from October one to November twenty-third. If approved, uh, these contract amendments would be effective as outlined in the attached articles with effective pay dates in those articles. Yeah, it's important to note that funding for both amendments is included in our uh current fiscal year budget. May I entertain any, any questions that you have?
Sorry, Commissioners, is there a motion?
So we'll, so move, okay. Sherry, second.
Motion by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Ketchel. Is there discussion? Mr. Ketchel?
No, actually not, just, I'm so happy that we've come to this, that's all.
Yes.
Same, I just want to thank you guys for your work on this. This is a, this is a big, big development, so thank you very much.
Sorry, um, I, I, good job on getting us to this point and on the, e- even the staff on, on looking uh at this uh within their realm of, of union um part-timers. Do we um, does this include any of our lifeguards?
It does not.
Even though we have some that are uh certified within
Correct, they're not within the Emergency Medical Services Division, so it does not include.
Okay, great. Um, I have some other questions.
We have addressed those separately.
We have, okay.
Uh, some other pay issues.
Okay, great. Thank you for, for telling me that. I'll stop with my questions. That's it. All in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we need to go back to um Ms Fitzgerald um for number seven from consent that we moved. Uh, Ms Hochara has provided, we recommend extending the current lease agreement concurrent with the contract extension. Um, that will take uh action from the board if motion by Commissioner Goodwin. Second by Commissioner Palmer. Thank you, I didn't hear him. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a I. That passes unanimously. Would you pass this to Ms Clark? Pass the language that you used. Thank you. Ms Jennifer Adams?
Close, not quite. Uh, morning, Ms. Chair, Commissioners. Um, the item for you today is associated with an amendment to Colleen Marine's contract for the remediation deployment at the SS United States. But before we dive into that amendment itself, I'm going to provide an update on where we stand with the project, some of the project partnerships that we have, uh, some of the public concerns, and then eventually the, the amendment. So I'll try and talk really, really fast so we can get through this, at least to the amendment part. So for those of you who don't know, the vessel made its tow from Philadelphia down to Mobile in uh about twelve days, about sixteen hundred mile tow. Took a little while. Uh, we were faced with a number of challenges getting out of Philadelphia, generally associated with the captain of port order that we were uh, that we received in November twenty twenty-four. Uh, that was specifically talking to us, uh, providing specifics to the stability and structural integrity of the vessel, a more robust towing communications plan, um, specific tug selection beyond just conventional tugs and more numerous tugs as opposed to just a few. Um, there was also some uh hazardous materials on board that needed to be contained in the form of oils as well as PCBs on the decks. Um, and then lastly, bit strength to make sure that the force that the tow, the tugs we're going to be putting on the vessel itself to make sure those bits were able to withstand that. Um, our contractor and myself didn't possess the, the understanding or knowledge to answer all those questions. We brought a naval architect onboard to work with us. Um, and we were able to get the analysis approved in early January, which was a, a pretty major undertaking. Um, but beyond that, planning to get out of Philadelphia was, was tough. Uh, we were dealing with winter weather up in the, up in the northern part of the United States, which can be pretty fierce in the wintertime, as well as tides. We had to go underneath three different bridges getting out of Philadelphia, and one of those bridges required us to go under at low tide, and the Coast Guard wanted us to go under during daylight hours and not during rush hour. So there were a lot of constraints on getting out, but we eventually did. And we arrived in Mobile in early March, and that's where the work really began. So the hundred and twenty fuel tanks that are onboard, those include not only the fuel tanks in the belly of the ship, but also hydraulic fuels and other things that are scattered throughout the ship. Those have all been emptied and cleaned. They're in various stages of being inspected and certified gas-free. At least fifty percent of those have been gas-free certified as of last week, but I suspect that number's a little bit higher now. I have not talked with the contractor this week about that specifically. Um, ninety-nine percent of the PCB containing materials, so the wiring, the flange gaskets and the ventilation system, um, the green decking that was all on top, all of that has been removed and remediated. We've been working with the EPA to make sure that we're checking all those boxes, and they've made two trips down to the boat or to the ship since then to make sure that we're doing everything uh right. And they are very satisfied with all of our uh, all of our work so far. Both funnels and the radar masks were removed a few months ago, and that was a big visual uh milestone in the project. Those were put onto barges, shipped about ten miles down the bay to a water-sized staging facility where they'll be uh stored until they're brought over here to Destin Fort Walton Beach, the museum. And that'll be sometime down the road in coordination with the SS United States Conservancy. All of the portholes and windows have been removed. The portholes have been transported to Oaklusa County, but those needed to be removed because they actually had a gasket within the porthole that had to come off for, for uh remediation purposes. But um, we don't have plans for those at this, at this time. And lastly, all the exfoliating paint throughout the ship, whether it be on the exterior or the interior, has been scraped off, vacuumed up, and transported to a disposal facility. If it had PCBs on it, went up to Michigan. If it did not, it went to a normal landfill. So this is just a quick little visual of a schematic of the ship. Um, the green basically shows where everything is one hundred percent deployment ready. We're down in the bilges now, uh finishing up the remediation in the engine rooms. Um, and we'll be going through the final inspections of those areas in the near future. Um, I say eighty percent of the ship is completed and ready for final inspections. That's probably well over ninety percent now. Uh, most of the inspection agencies that come onboard to support this are federal. And there was a little bit of a hiccup here in the fall where they weren't able to make it or even communicate with us for quite some time. We're starting to communicate with them again. We have our next round of final inspections this Friday. Um, and there's also ongoing planning for the safety, security, and the deployment plan. Um, and that's being headed up by Florida Fish and Wildlife, US Coast Guard, and Oaklusa County Public uh Public Safety. So a future timeline between now and early twenty twenty-six, we're going to finalize uh finalize those uh gas-free certifications on the fuel tanks, remove the final little bits of PCBs that are onboard, work with the EPA to make sure we've satisfied their expectations, do some additional testing for them, uh, remain the final non-metal items, uh, and then lastly, start cutting holes strategically throughout the, the ship to allow for air and water to transfer through the vessel quickly uh so that during deployment, the deployment activity doesn't take multiple days. It's, it's, you know, over the course of a few hours. Yep, and then hopefully deployment in early twenty twenty-six. So with deployment, we're not allowed to use explosives. That goes back to why we're going to have to be cutting so many holes. We have to be able to get the water into the ship very, very quickly. All of those fuel tanks will be filled with water prior to deployment activities to at least get the, the process started and balance that ship down a little bit. Um, the naval architect that we used to get out of Philadelphia actually developed a model of the ship that we're going to use to allow him to inform us on exactly where those holes need to be cut to uh provide for an efficient and safe deployment. Um, when it leaves Mobile, it, it'll be about a three-day process. It'll arrive south of uh Oaklusa County or remain onsite anchored for three days. Um, there will be twenty-four-seven security perimeter around the vessel during that time and personnel on the ship to ensure that everything is safe and there's nothing weird that happens during that process. So the deployment locations, as you may recall, there were two locations that were identified. One was kind of the southeast toward Panama City, the other one was southwest towards Pensacola, twenty, twenty-five miles from us. Um, after some significant coordination between those communities as well as the military, the best deployment location was determined to be to the southwest, about twenty-one miles from Destin Pass and about thirty miles from Pensacola. Um, this was in close coordination with the military as well. Um, and as you recall, last meeting, uh, we entered into a funding agreement. We visit Pensacola to help support the deployment of the vessel as well as marketing of the, the uh deployment after, uh, after it's gone down. So not only selecting, selecting a deployment site is really important, but then we have to do our due diligence to make sure that we're deploying this in a place that's void of any historical resources or any natural reef that's out there. So we did some side scan sonar as well as visual surveys to confirm that there was indeed nothing on the bottom. And what you're looking at here is a side scan mosaic, and those little dots that you see, um, those are actually artificial reefs. But there are two public artificial reefs, and the rest are private artificial reefs in the form of chicken coops. So that's a very common uh private artificial reef that's deployed by our fishing captains here in the destination, and it's nothing of concern. So our deployment uh location has been uh selected. Project partners, I mentioned that briefly. You've seen these uh come across your agenda over the last couple meetings, uh, first being Florida Fish and Wildlife Foundation, which is the nonprofit arm of uh Florida Fish and Wildlife uh Conservation Commission. Uh, they donated two million dollars towards the project. Coastal Conservation Association donated five hundred thousand dollars to the project, and that's the largest contribution they've ever given to any, any one project. Visit Pensacola, one point five million, uh, one million going to construction, half a million going towards marketing. Uh, Forest Blue is a group that we've worked with on a number of different projects. They take ex-special forces operators and redirect them toward, once they've retired, redirect them toward marine conservation initiatives. And the SS United States is one that they showed keen interest in, especially on the security side of things. So all the security and safety, uh, that, the, the costs incurred for that will be covered by Forest Blue, and they will support that effort. Now, we Worldwide is a scuba diving training organization. Uh, it's synonymous with Patty. Uh, they're helping us with the dive safety side of things and helping us coordinate with Dan and other organizations to make sure that we're getting messaging out there about how to dive wrecks and the SS United States safely once it's gone down. And lastly, the Explorers Club. The Explorers Club is a group that I was initiated into over the summer. They have a program where you can apply for a flag. You can flag your expedition. Other notable flagged expeditions are when people went to space, Mariner's Trench, top of Everest. So the SS United States is now a flagged, uh, flagged expedition, and we will be flying their flag come deployment. So all that to say, we've raised about four million dollars in funding for this project, and we anticipate another million or so dollars worth of funding to come in between now and when the ship goes down. Research partners, this is something that's very exciting to me. Uh, we're working closely with Dauphin Island Sea Lab, Louisiana State University, groups that we've worked with before, but most notably probably Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. Um, they're the clearinghouse for scientific research or marine scientific research for the world, really. Um, and they came to us wanting to perform biological, chemical and physical monitoring of the ship for ten years post-deployment. Um, they went out and got some grants to fund the first two years of that, and we look forward to working with them to make that happen and, and hopefully collect some additional, uh, funding to, to support that. Um, then lastly, economic impact. We've thrown a lot of numbers out there about what other vessels, large vessels have, have done for the regions that they've been deployed. And we hope to do that for the SS United States and show that those numbers are far greater than what, uh, what those other vessels have done for those other local communities. So media impact, this is just to show what this vessel or what this project has done to date. So since November first to, uh, twenty twenty-four to November first, twenty twenty-five, a hundred and eighty-four million dollars in earned media has been generated. So that we would have had to have paid a hundred and eighty-four million dollars to get the amount of media that this project has generated, and that equates to about twenty billion in reach. That's far greater than the world's population, but if I click on ten different news articles that have that, that counts as ten clicks or ten hits, so keep that in mind. Every major news outlet is covering this documentary, numerous documentaries are, are covering this project, and IMAX is a, um, has shown interest in this project for a large film that they're making on shipwrecks. And they actually will begin, um, they will begin shooting on the SS United States in the coming weeks with us to support that film. So tourism benefits, I mentioned some of those other large vessels, the Ariscanese, Beagle Grove, Vandenberg, they're looking at about, for every dollar invested, a hundred and fifty dollars in return, so that is significant. And when the Ariscanee went down, they were seeing dive visitation of about ten thousand divers annually. And honestly, the reason that number probably wasn't greater is because there weren't enough dive operators to be able to keep bringing those divers out there. So I anticipate that once this, the SS United States goes down, we're going to see numbers greater than that, assuming our fleet can handle the, the influx of divers. So we're probably going to see a lot of new businesses popping up in the dive industry. So deployment date, this is, I get asked every single day, I'm sure you all do too, um, and it's, it's a tricky one. It's hard to just set a date because we're having to plan for all the safety and security stuff. We're having to plan for, for weather. But what we're doing in our bet, the best-case scenario is this vessel could be deployed as early as the last week of February. In the event that the weather does not cooperate or we hit other, other speed bumps, deployment would be pushed thirty days. If we run into more speed bumps and more weather, we push another thirty days until this vessel goes down. And it's one-week periods to allow for a little bit of, uh, a little bit of play with the weather. And again, that safety and security that's being managed by FWC, Coast Guard and our public safety, um, is, there's so many logistics, so many groups that are coming from around the United States. We can't just start and start, uh, stop and start back up again in just three days' notice. That's the reason for those thirty-day delays. This is a dense slide, and it's meant to be. So this is the regulatory guidance that we're following for this project. Everything from EPA guidance, U.S., uh, um, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Gulf and Atlantic States Marine Fisheries, um, as well as our internal standard operating procedures. There's a lot of things that are going into this, and we're following all of it to a T. So some of the outside concerns, I mean, a lot of these you've heard during public comment, starting with this being a, uh, being on the National Register of Historic Places, that doesn't provide any protections to being scrapped, to being sunk as an artificial reef or anything like that, unless it was owned by the federal government. There's a lot of concerns in the aluminum that's on the ship. That is not a concern. There's a lot of aluminum deployed as artificial reefs. That's not something we need to be concerned about. PCBs, there is worry that we weren't going to fully remediate the ship of PCBs. We spent a lot of money, a lot of time and a lot of coordination with the EPA to make sure that we're checking all those boxes. Lead and asbestos, there's very strict information in those same documents on how to deal with those, and we're following that to a T. Emotional distress and lawsuits, self-harm, harm to others, lawsuits against the county. We've heard all of it, and we've dealt with them accordingly. All of, there's a lot of folks who are not keen on this becoming artificial reef and have reached out to all of these regulatory agencies that I've mentioned. And we've had to jump through a lot of hoops to be able to satisfy those concerns. And there are some concerns that do not pose any concern by those regulatory agencies, and we'll get that in a second. Uh, the oil and fuel, again, we mentioned there's a lot of that onboard, but we've removed it all, and we're going through the checks to make sure it's clean. Unexplored ordinance, there was concern that maybe the unexplored ordinance from Eglin Air Force Base could be a concern to our divers. It's not a bit of a concern to any of the other artificial reefs that we've deployed over the years, and we actually worked very close with them for their mission to actually create additional artificial reefs for our program. And last, zinc chromate and hexavalent chromium, which has been a hot topic recently, and I have one slide on that. Um, zinc chromate is not a federally regulated material that requires removal from the SS United States. It's treated just like lead and asbestos. So as long as there's no peeling paint that contains zinc chromate, it can remain on the ship itself. But zinc chromate is also very, it's, it's very different in a freshwater environment versus a saltwater environment. So in freshwater environments, a lot of times they're, you know, very closed systems or semi-closed systems, and that ends up in your drinking water, and the, the freshwater itself doesn't lend to actually breaking down the zinc chromate. But in the case of saltwater, um, in the open ocean or the open Gulf for that matter, it, uh, it, it does lend itself to breaking down the zinc chromate of the hexavalent chromium down to a trivalent chromium, which is a totally different scenario and a lot less toxic, uh, material. The EPA and the other regulatory agencies that comment on all of these projects have not raised any concerns about hexavalent chromium or zinc chromate, so we're proceeding with the guidance that are in the documents that we have at hand. So going into the amendment, how we got to where we are today, here are some of the unexpected costs, and these truly were things that we could not have planned for. The additional dockage in Philadelphia associated with a lot of the additional surveys and things that we had to do prior to getting out. The outbound tugs that we were required to use were significantly more expensive and more numerous than we had originally planned and were used in other similar-sized vessel, uh, toes. Tow and pollution insurance, that was mentioned earlier, that jumped significantly due to some other accidents that had happened throughout the country around the same time and some of the knee-jerk reactions associated with that. Fuel surcharges, on our way down to Mobile, we, um, encountered a situation where, uh, the U.S. Coast Guard wanted us to provide a tow, a tug to shadow the tow when it went through the Florida Keys, and that was not discussed prior to the actual tow itself, and we gladly, uh, complied because they would have held us up in Miami, and that would have been a lot of additional costs as well. And just general Captain de Port order compliance. And this is just a snapshot of where we came up with the two point nine five million dollar ask today in the amendment. Um, the column on the left, the remaining budget, this is what the contractor still technically has within those buckets. The, these buckets were essentially taken from to fund a lot of those overages that I mentioned before. That last slide, that accounted for about two point two million dollars of that two point nine five million dollars that's being asked for today. The change from original, that's what the, uh, ourselves and, and the contractor discussed is needing to be increased to get us to the finish line. We included additional dockage to get us to June first. In the event that we have a number of weather events or things that keep us there longer, we have some contingency in there as well. So we're really only talking about a four or five hundred thousand dollar increase to what the contractor originally proposed for this project. Um, and with that, um, that was very quick. There was a lot of information there, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you, uh, need any, uh, additional information about the project itself. You can go to thessusus.com.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox.
Um, thank you, Chairman. Um, so, Mr. Fogg, I think, uh, you visited this just very briefly at the beginning of this presentation that the, that the funds raised
Yep.
Um, exceed the ask here.
Yes.
By over a million dollars.
Yep.
Um, so the impact on our, um, on our citizens will be zero, except for the benefit, um, of the continued project moving forward.
That's a very important part. So it's a two point nine five million dollar amendment, but we've raised more than four million dollars in funds for this project, so it'll be off that.
I know that took a lot of diligence, even while you're dealing with additional encumbrances and that, that you have, have detailed very, um, it, it, in finite detail. I mean, I, I really appreciate all your hard work on this project. I know it's been a lot to overcome at the same time as you're, you're putting on your cheerful face to ask for that money. Um, but people believe in it all over the place, or we can be in receipt of those four million dollars in raised funds, and we really appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Set a motion, Commissioner Cox?
Yes, sir.
Well, I was going to make a motion, but I'll go ahead and make the second. Um, but, you know, thank you, Alex, for all the work that you guys have done on this. For, for those, uh, who may be seeing this for the first time, we did get to spend, uh, you know, just as much time as we needed together on this to talk about all of these different things, and I had all my questions answered uh, during those discussions, and so I do want to thank you for that, and I just, you know, keep, you know, keep at it. Let's keep raising some money on this and even lower the cost on the citizens. Thank you.
We'll try. Thank you. Right. Any other comments?
Just real quick, so Alex, just to confirm, obviously you're here because you've identified an amendment that, to the budget, and I assume it's to the contract as well, uh, or the various contracts that are needed to meet the project requirements as they become clear. So appreciate you bringing that to the board for approval. Um, obviously, you've come with the understanding that there's always a chance the board says, no, uh, we're not going to approve those amounts. Just so that our citizens can understand, I mean, what's the backup plan if we don't have, if we don't budget this? What's the alternative for this ship?
If, if we did not approve this and we abandoned the artificial reef project, the really only option would be to be scrapped. It's been dismantled to a point to where it's not going to be a, a museum anymore. It's not going to be towed to Miami or other destinations to be a museum. The funnels are sitting at a landside facility, waiting to come over here for the land-based museum. Scrap is really, truly the only option.
Was, was scrapping of this ship something that it was at significant risk of, of incurring before the county elected to buy it?
Yes, I believe that there was actually a company that bid to scrap the SS United States numerous year, for, for numerous years, leading up to when we took ownership of the vessel for artificial reef purposes. So essentially, we saved it from being scrapped.
Okay, so our, our options are, you know, keep on, keep on going and get this done according with the guidelines. And you found a way to do that without any property tax dollars.
Yes, sir.
Or it would be scrapped, which is where it would have been previously.
That is correct.
Had we not stepped in. So in other words, you didn't initiate a program to sink the ship. You actually started this because the ship was about to be cut up into pieces?
Um, I mean, it certainly had an attraction to be a, a large artificial reef for our program, but the, the fortunate consequence of that was saving it, yes.
Right. In other words, you weren't competing against somebody who was going to refurbish it and start driving it around.
That is correct. That is correct. There were numerous proposals heard and, and none of them.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask those questions is because I still get the communications that, that, that seem to think somehow Okaloosa County went out and said, hey, you know, there's this ship, it's a, it's a great historic thing, um, we want to destroy it. And I think that's, you know, a hundred and eighty degrees opposite of, of really what the effort is here. Um, and I just, I, I really wish we could dispel that, what I think is a misconception, um, that, that seems to perpetuate somehow.
And there's, there's not another artificial reef out there that will have a standalone museum honoring it with all the artifacts that have been collected over the years. I mean, the amount of artifacts that exist from this ship since, you know, the nineteen fifties is incredible. I mean, people reach out with letters and stories about them sailing to Europe on this to meet up with their husband and during, you know, interesting times in our world's history. Um, it, it's got an incredible history, and we're looking forward to continuing after it goes beneath the golf surface.
It should be noted, the SS Conservancy, which was slated, the reason they bought it was to try and save it, and they've entertained proposals for many years. And the granddaughter of the ship's designer is the head of that agency. They actually were offered more money to scrap it, and they chose to go this route because they thought this was a better legacy for the ship and everything else than the other options that they had seen to date. And they received proposals from all over the place, and they, most of them turned out, they were, uh, a lot of wishful dreams and stuff with no money or financial backing or reality check as far as the cost of rebuilding the ship. So they, they chose us over scrapping, even though they could have done that to financially gain more because they thought it was the better way, and they were dedicated to preserving the ship. So that says a lot right there.
Now, thanks for clarifying. I'll certainly support it. Um, don't like going over budget, understand how it happens. Happens just about any time you build something or take on a big project, there can be unknowns. Um, I know that there was some discussion that maybe we had improperly budgeted from the beginning, but I know we've sat down and talked through it, and my understanding is, is that there, there literally were things that would have been, um, unreasonable to have anticipated occurring along the line, and that's really where these, these extra dollars are coming from. So again, you're staying out of the general fund dollars, so I appreciate that, and, uh, I'll support it.
Mr. Fogg, tell me, um, total project, how much of this is coming from property tax?
Zero.
Okay, thanks. Knew the answer, it's just good to hear that.
Of course.
Um, social media says otherwise very frequently, and so it's, it's good to, to be so transparent, to say it's, it's not. Um, at some point, um, people will believe that.
Yep.
So that'd be good.
One person at a time.
All in favor, signify with a I? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Uh, Mr. Bitterman, Commissioners, I'm just going to push through with these items, and so if you need a break, take one more at a time, if you would, but Mr. Bitterman.
Sure. Push the mic.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Scott Bitterman with the Public Works Department. Uh, today I'd like to have Mr. Rob Vandenberg, he's our Road Division Chief. I'd like to have him present this item. Uh, Public Works has a really good team that's responsible for the success of the Dirt to Pave Program, and Rob's been leading the implementation effort, so I'd like him to speak to that today. Rob?
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, uh, this morning. This request is for, uh, the last, uh, money that we're going to need for the capping of our dirt road stabilization, commonly known as the fifty and five. Mr. King stated earlier that we've done to stabilize two hundred miles, and about a hundred and forty-eight of those miles have been capped. This five million dollars ask here is to cap the remaining fifty-two. Um, and we will be out of the Ozai dirt road business.
Commissioner Ketch?
I feel like we should name this the Nathan Boyle's Amendment, but under his, he said you have to be dead to have something named after you, but he's, he really, he really, uh, he really championed this. So I'm very excited about it, and I'll make the motion for approval. Thanks for all your hard work. It's really made a difference.
Have a motion. Commissioner Ketchel, second, my Commissioner Palmer. One comment. And I'm sorry, Mr. Autry is not here for this comment, but there's about eight miles left on top of this.
Yes, sir.
And I want to see us finish those eight miles.
Yes, sir.
I know we can have a parade over this because it's a huge accomplishment, but we still have people living on about eight miles worth that has been negotiated and back and forth, and, and we're to the point where it's our obligation to finish that. Um, I, I don't, I, I can't sit today and say we're finished knowing that we have that, uh, just over eight miles remaining that is going to get us to genuine completion of roads that are ours, that, um, maybe historically we've never, uh, taken care of them, but we're to the point now where, um, we've come too far to stop that short.
Yes, sir.
So, so I'm definitely in favor for this. I just can't go with the idea of saying we've, we've fully completed because those eight miles are still there, and we still have hundreds of folks that live on them, and, and I want to see us finish that.
Understood.
I know we're pressed for time, but may I say one more thing?
Yes.
Your road's going to be in better shape than Shalimar Bridge to Eglin Parkway.
That's for sound effects on speakerphone. All right, all in favor, signify with a I? Any opposed? Thank you. Jeff Peters?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Um, before you, today is the, uh, a, a property that was purchased about, coming up on five years ago, uh, in Baker, uh, where the, it's the home of the Baker Athletic Youth Association. Uh, this is a multipurpose, um, athletic complex addition to what's already there. There's, many of you have been there. There's, it's, there's baseball fields, softball fields. Uh, Baker High School plays on a large field there. Uh, their biggest need is multipurpose field, soccer, football. Uh, they don't have that. They're practicing in the outfield there, so our goal is to design, was to design a, a multipurpose complex that can be utilized for the kids, uh, to, to play those, those types of sports, uh, on those, uh, the overall project, we, we decided to phase it just for budgetary reasons. Uh, first phase would be their, their most need is the fields, so we would start with the, uh, the athletic fields. Uh, there'll be some cut and fill there to kind of level those out with some lights, uh, bathroom concession. Um, really just kind of open it up on that ten acres, uh, and allow with some drainage and allowing, um, tho- those activities to start moving into the, the, the second phases, which we'll look at future budgets, would be a, a walking trail, um, some, some asphalt parking, um, some different projects like that as we move into this, but the biggest need is the athletic fields and, um, uh, from what we've. But the biggest need is the athletic fields and, um, uh, from what we've heard from them, we met with their staff and we've done some upgrades here recently. Um, added some parking lot light, LED lights in the parking lot, just tore down their old batting cages and, uh, are in the process of installing two brand new, uh, batting cages with synthetic turf. Uh, we filled in the dugouts with concrete, uh, poured bleacher pads and installed two brand new bleachers there around the, the ball field. So, um, we, we're making some strides to make that a nice complex. And, um, this approval today would, would, uh, would approve the concept and we'll jump into the design, uh, phase if, if it's approved by you all today.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve with comments. What discussion?
A motion by Commissioner Cox, a second by Commissioner Palmer. Commissioner Cox, should I come in?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, Mr. Peters, I want to thank you for, um, your really getting on this, um, for the Baker area. And this is my district. Um, drive by those fields frequently even still today. But, and it's been, I won't say necessarily ill repair, but it's been, um, an area that has needed revitalization for some time. Uh, I know that our youth sports will really, really appreciate this and get a lot of use out of it. And I think it's just going to be, um, an, an unblemishing, you know, nut spot for, for, uh, generations to come. So thank you so much for jumping on this. I really appreciate your tenacity in that. And knew that would be the case when we put you in this position. So I'm very glad to see the, uh, the fruits of that endeavor. Thank you.
The overview picture, that one there, uh, is there any way to get that stormwater onto one of the other adjacent parcels that we already own? I'm just, just thinking of expansion down the road and limiting what we have already. I, I know that we own a parcel just west of that and I'm, I'm not trying to re-engineer this. I just want to be sure that we're not tying ourselves now to, to not being able to do something down the road. When we bought this piece with tourist development dollars, it was for the purpose of being able to.
Sure.
Go forward in expansion.
So, some of the, the difficulties in that is that the slope of the property that where the fields are going on and, and obviously the athletic fields being, being level for playing it, the, it, it, it causes a little bit of, uh, an area where we'll have to cut and fill. It'll be a drop off with some block fencing and stuff like that. So, uh, trying to get some drainage from flowing down into the property before or below that to the south. And Scott and I have talked a few times about it and getting Public Works involved and in moving some of that water around.
Okay.
That, we, we obviously want to best utilize the facility and the green grass that we've got out there.
So there's a chance.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to hear. We definitely want to get the most green grass out there that we can.
Yes, sir. All in favor, signify with a I. Passes unanimously. Ms. Orr.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of County Commissioners. I have two agenda items in front of you today. The first one being, uh, the approval of our, the ship 2025 incentive strategy report. Uh, we annually have to submit this to Florida Housing with a deadline of December 31st. Uh, the A-hat Committee did actually take a good look at this this year and did make a few recommendations. There are some grammatical edits to this document as well as some updates to the committee members as we did have a few changes and then the following revisions. Uh, they did add, recommend to add the definition of the statutory accessory dwelling units, uh, to the incentive strategy this year. Uh, they did update to reflect the county's replacement of its former proportionate share-based transportation concurrency system, which took place last year and wanted to make sure that the language was reflected. Uh, the A-hat was, did get a presentation on those changes. Uh, they did recommend to consider expanding the qualifications for flexible density bonuses. Um, looking at smaller footprint homes that serve our targeted demographic. Uh, with staff discussion and collaboration with growth and management and the water and sewer department. Um, the upcoming year, we are going to provide some education to our A-hat Committee as well as look at what is attractive to our developers. Um, that would incentivize them to consider building affordable homes in our area. Also taking into consideration, excuse me, our current housing needs as well as our current housing market. Um, and then the last thing that our, uh, committee recommended was looking at supporting developments near transportation hubs and identifying areas where affordable housing developments or homes, um, could be built where there is a need, um, for transportation and collaboration with our transportation department as well as different community partners to kind of, uh, talk to those neighborhoods that are identified as low income areas. Other than that, any questions?
Chairman, do you want to take those in separate bites or just one motion for approval?
Oh, one motion for approval of the strategic report.
Okay. And you're doing a great job, by the way. I'm very impressed. I want to tell you that. So I make a motion for approval.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Um, if you notice a vacancy on the list within the packet, that's an essential service personnel. We had a representative from the sheriff's office. They've retired and so we're, we're hoping that that gets, uh, gets filled in the near future. But I'll tell you, the Affordable Housing Advisory Council has been doing spectacular work. If, if, for those two of you, you remember that, um, there were multiple years where we would have meetings and not be able to have the meetings because people wouldn't even show up. And so they, um, they made some drastic changes to say, if you don't show up for this many, you're no longer a part of the committee and that helped tremendously. And now the ones that are on it, uh, care and they desire to be a part of it. And so they actually come and speak and, and, uh, see things along. So thank you for the work that you're doing and the way that you're ringleading all of, uh, the volunteers within and the staff on that side.
Leadership matters.
Does. Uh, all in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Your second item.
Right. And our second item is to approve a, an amendment to our local housing assistant plan for fiscal years, uh, 2021 through 2024, as well as 2019 through 2023. This comes from receiving feedback and guidance from the board at a May board meeting to, um, giving me guidance to increase the maximum award for our owner occupied rehabilitation strategy from $50,000 to $100,000. That is also to include some homeowners insurance components that we would be able to assist homeowners who may not be able to afford, uh, homeowners insurance, being able to utilize, utilize some of those funds and partner with, um, homeowner, home owners and home insurance companies, excuse me, um, to help cover a certain amount of years. And then the second point that was amended is we gave me guidance to add a rental assistance strategy, um, to both of those local housing assistance plans where we would be able to provide some sort of rental assistance or utility assistance to, uh, renters and families in our communities who are definitely in need. And so that would be, um, structured with the assistance of Florida Housing Coalition to make sure that we are actually covering all of our bases and not leaving the county liable. So any questions or comments for those?
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Cox. Second by Commissioner Ketchel. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
New business. Our next item is the selection of a board chairman and vice chairman for the calendar year 2026.
Mr. Chairman. So, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you for, um, the, uh, the leadership that you've provided over the last two years. Uh, it's been a lot of work and a lot of important things have been happening. So I want to thank you very much for that. Um, with that, um, I also know that there are, there are some things that are very important to my district in particular. Um, that would, were supposed to really be done this year and they're not quite done yet. And so I think that there's, uh, there's still some work to be done and, um, I need to make sure that whoever's sitting in the, the chair position is fully supportive of those projects and, and those projects are the new park in Destin and the SS United States. Um, and so with that, I want to nominate Chairman, I mean, um, um, Commissioner Goodwin as chairman for next year.
Second.
A motion for Commissioner Goodwin. Commissioner Palmer and a second from Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Is there a motion for a second?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, please.
Um, I would nominate, uh, Commissioner Palmer as vice chair, um, having had the opportunity to work with him. Um, I think that he is ready, uh, to set out on that path. Um, and frankly, um, I am, uh, very respectful of the fact that we can have honest debates, disagree on things. I think we get, uh, I think we get a lot better work done, uh, when we kind of have these, 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 um, discussions that we don't just all go along to get along and we actually debate and come to the best decision for our people. So, um, I would, uh, I would nominate him, uh, for that role.
A motion by Commissioner Goodwin. Sir, a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cox. No better example than the same day. Uh, all in favor, signify with a I. Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Uh, Mr. Tomacek, do you have any additional speaker cards? Nicholas Smith. You have three minutes to speak on any item of your choice. Yes, sir. If you'll push the speak button to get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Uh, as I was sitting in the back, um, I was very attentive to one of the topics that was spoke on and that was the transportation, uh, here in Okaloosa County. My mom has been a recipient of the transportation. Um, she has poor blood circulation in her li- lower legs. And when I was in the military, I did not have the luxury of taking her to her appointments. She actually moved up here from Orlando back in October of 2022. And it's just past three years. And so we talked about compassion and then we also talked about being a good steward. I believe compassion and being a good steward cannot go one without the other. I am a religious man. And I believe that all resources are available and should be readily available to those regardless of their income. There are different classes of citizens, whether young, old, whether they have transportation or not. Everyone's different. And so I come from a poor background. First one to move out of my neighborhood to actually do something and the first one in my family to graduate high school. Go to college, join the military, retire from the military and just live a life of integrity. And so during my time here in Okaloosa County, I have driven Uber. And a lot of the insurance companies book medical appointments for a good majority of their patients or clients through Uber. So that may account for some of the, um, vacancies on the public transportation. I don't know how Uber does it, but I do know that should the insurance companies reach out to Okaloosa County Board of Commissioners or something, there could be a possibility for an increase in the use of public transportation. If I understand correctly, there was a $20 million budget presented by Ms. Fitzgerald for the 2026 or subsequent years. Um, and then there's possibly another between $800,000 and $900,000 that was either misused, redirected or not appropriated correctly. Why can't that money just be given back to the county? And, and from the looks of it, there is 19 million that was properly used. So I believe the benefit outweighs the cost. The unused funds should go back to the county and that should be added in the stipulation for further agreement. I thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, and I hope the contractor agrees. But hey, specifically, I'm glad you live here.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for, uh, thanks for your service. Thanks for the time that you have in. And, and you just came and said, here's what I've been doing to monetize. Here's what I've been doing for work. Uh, why don't you look at taking part of that model to offset? And, and so you put others well before yourself. And so I just wanted to recognize that and recognize you for that. So thank you for, for bringing that forward.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask just a quick question? Obviously, um, appreciate you being here and, you know, taking the time to come up and speak. It is extremely helpful to this board when we have citizens that come back and provide feedback. Because otherwise we're doing a lot of speculation on what we think is important. And, and the best evidence is hearing from the people that are receiving the services. So thank you for speaking on behalf of your mom. I do have a question though. Does your mom use primarily, um, the, uh, paratransit service? Or does she ever use the fixed route, route? In other words, does she ever go to the bus stop and get on the bus or is she using the on-call service?
It was an on-call service.
Okay.
Uh, my mom has been a recipient of, of that and also my brother's girlfriend. Um, the reason why my mom had to use it was because when I was in the military, I was a single dad. And so I didn't have the luxury of coming out of the office to take her to her appointments. And it, it helped her a lot because she just had surgeries that she's been trying to get on her legs for the past five years. But it was the on-call, sir.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Sir.
Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to applaud you for coming forward today. I know it's not easy, you know, to, to come out and stand up for what you truly believe in. And just as, um, to, to echo what Commissioner Goodwin said, I mean, we, we can't make educated decisions about what you need, you know, unless you come forward. So we really appreciate you doing that. I, I think that every member of the board echoes your sentiments on what, what probably needs to happen. And, um, and that's part of the reason that I suggested a little bit more time for us to, to take a look at it and make a, a healthier decision moving forward. Thank you so much for coming up today.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Um, Chairman, I do have one last comment, if that's okay. You know, I, when I was growing up, a lot of the things that I heard in school and from, uh, those that are senior to me, whether in authority or just by age, uh, is that a picture can tell a thousand words. Um, uh, Commissioner Goodwin, sir, um, I just had, is it okay if I ask you a couple of questions?
Well, I would suggest y'all make an appointment.
Okay.
Yes, sir. For another time.
Um, it was just, you know, a lot of things can be going on when transportation is being conducted. And so I appreciate you all's time.
Sir, if you'll stick around, the meeting will be over in just a moment. Y'all can exchange information.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Sharon is right behind him and.
Okay, great.
If that's okay, they can connect right now.
Okay, she'll connect with you right now.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Yes, sir. Steve Perry.
Uh, I had some things I wanted to say further, but, uh, I'm going to change that, uh, and everything. Uh, I appreciate you guys taking the time to let me speak and everything like that. However, I, I respectfully disagree with some of the comments that, uh, Natural Resource thing, uh, they. I want it on the record with you guys know that myself and my colleagues, none of us have done anything or said anything to try to prevent you or steal the ship or suggest that property taxes are going to be paid. None of us, I can't help what private people do out in social media and stuff like that. But no one from my team and our organization has ever done anything. We've done nothing but respectful. And I've come here a dozen times to speak to you about this issue and everything like that. So, um, Mr. Mixon, with, uh, your permission, Mr. Tomacek has a couple of pictures at the end of the thing. If I'd be allowed to put it on the screen so you could see them.
Um, so, no, uh, we're not going to put pictures of public comment. But if, if you'd like to, Mr. Tomacek, send it to each commissioner via their email.
That would be fine.
I'll be able to see them.
So with that said, um, uh, again, uh, just wanted on the record that, uh, uh, I've been speaking on behalf of this ship and everything like that because it is a historic thing. I know everyone seems to think it's a rust bucket and it's completely gone, but I know ships, I've been dealing with it and you'll see it in the pictures you get for 50 years. And I know ships, I've seen ships that are rusting away in 15 years and one that's not and everything like that. So, uh, I disagree with, uh, your philosophy in it, but I understand it. But there is a, uh, a video out on YouTube with, uh, called the Free Doc, a free documentary that, um, says sinking an aircraft carrier. And if you watch that, you will see that the Navy did remediate, sink, chromate off that vessel. And that's the reason it cost nearly 25 million to do it, but the Navy had to do it within government agency. So I know there might not be any private EPA rules on the records right now, but the government had to do this. And, uh, private people shouldn't have to do anything less than what the government has to do to protect our environment. Uh, we may not see it exactly and as soon as, uh, some people may have flamed, make it sound like, uh, you know, divers are going to be starting diving and dying from poison and stuff within a year and everything like that. But, uh, one significant thing about the ship with the aluminum that's in the superstructure and the steel hull, there's a thing called galvanic corrosion. Yes, aluminum boats that are all aluminum don't have a reaction. They don't corrode in water. But when you have steel and aluminum, the, uh, the aluminum is the sacrificial animal and it will start corroding. It may take decades, but it will create. It may take decades, but it will create an issue later on. A lot of this stuff may not appear to us in our lifetimes. But this is a legacy that you're going to have when there's all steel ships that will provide the same issue for you and everything without creating difficulties down the road as well as with the zinc chromate and hexan chromeate. I'm sorry, I disagree that it breaks down into trichomonch in salt water. There's no proof of that and everything. We've done our research and everything like that. So it's very important so you guys know that. I respect that you guys vote the way you are and everything, and I'm going to continue coming here and speaking on behalf. And I'm hoping that we can get this issue on agenda items you mentioned back in September. And I will be sending an email all to you about this issue in the very near future. Thank you.
Michael Hume.
Good morning, everyone. I'm reading the room, so I'll be brief. I am Michael Hume, the owner of Scepter Security. It's a Class B security agency for the state of Florida, along with a few other companies. One of the companies I own is also in Florala, Alabama, Covington County. I came here with the primary intent to listen about the SS US and the CO2 deep well storage facility, which I'll loop back to at the end. So thank you all for the opportunity to speak. One of the certifications that I hold is a facility security officer through the Maritime Transportation Security Act with the authority having jurisdiction, the United States Coast Guard. Therefore, I'm presenting our company, Scepter Security to help or are showing our willingness to support the wildlife conservation security related to the SS deployment and the security operations for the three to four days. What the county will receive is an independent security agency that is familiar with the dive operations and the training, security related operations to go into securing that. In the event that the county needs emergency contingency operations in the future, we will be the ones with some other knowledge out besides the agencies, the federal state agencies that know the operation. In return, our company also receives some maritime training operations. I spoke with Mr. Finlik and Mr. Kofi earlier and it's, they said, go ahead and present it anyways, even though they're they're tracking that what I'm offering the county to do. The second portion of this is we are tied into the Covington County, the mayor there in Florala. So if there's any liaison that's needed to communicate with Alabama, we can do that on the behalf if you guys want. And I say that because there is sentiments about the CO2 storage facility in Florala and Covington itself as well. There's actually bills, I want to say it is, the state representative and Senator currently are actually looking to pass HB 64 and 61 that will essentially block CO2 storage from happening in Alabama altogether. So with that being said, if you have any questions for me, I'm here to answer them.
HB 64 and 61?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. That's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, minute, Commissioner Palmer.
It's been a great meeting. Thank you, guys, for the lively debates. And I think I'm going to leave it at that, but Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everybody. And I think it's good when we all don't sound alike. You know, it doesn't sound like it's canned, so it's good to have these discussions.
That's right. I'll just keep working progressively. So I'd like to take the time. You know, as as residents in Ocalusa County, I want you to know there's over 1,000 employees that that represent Ocalusa County and they represent Ocalusa County tremendously. We are so blessed as a community to have the the level of staff that that calls Ocalusa their employer, their home. And that that happens from leadership. Leadership down is tremendous to see just the the moral fiber and the integrity from Mr. Hofstadter to the three deputy administrators, the the way that they follow through in compassion and and still administratively leading the department heads that we have. Each one of them do a tremendous work here to make our home better. All the way through while we were sitting here, I just got a text from a city councilman in Crestview saying, hey, here's your folks at work. And it's it's some county staff members doing exactly what they do every day. But we take it for granted a lot of times. And I just want to to be sure that we point that out with some of the things that have been started, pipelines for leadership, being able to see mentorship happen where you don't just come to work and know this is your lane, stay within it. Don't look at my lane that because you don't need to know what it is. Yes, you do, because you might desire that. You you may want to advance one day. And what I see in Ocalusa County is we've come to a spot where we're not scared. We're not in fear of someone else taking our job. We're encouraging them. Do a better job where you are because someone's going to have to replace me over time. And and that excites me because it shows this this excitement on the half of of our staff to love where they come to work and to desire to make a career out of it. You know, that's what makes this such a great community to live in, such a great place for over 1,000 people to work, to be able to provide those services at such a level where really you're taking on a mantra of treating people the way you want to be treated. And so thank you for the work that you do as the staff in the county. Mr. Hofstadter, thank you for the way that you lead because as we've heard already from Commissioner Ketchel, leadership matters. And in this situation, it shows overwhelmingly. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Chairman. To echo not verbatim what Chairman Mixon said. And and I want to thank you also for your chairmanship this last year. It has it has meant the world to me to have a strong sense of leadership from you. And in my first year as a county commissioner, I really appreciate that, the the voice of stability and reason. And in some cases, I can see you looking down both sides of the aisle on an issue and really delivering what you feel is a just vote on that. So I appreciate that. I'm going to say Merry Christmas at the end of what I'm going to say here, but I wanted to take a moment to celebrate our managers in Ocalusa County. We have so many department heads looking over those 1,000 employees. And I had the privilege to attend recently the management retreat, which is a workshop that feels very much like a retreat because every member in there and even the guest speaker himself noted this, that every member of management in there, we know, we recognize that you guys hear it all, right? You hear the good, the bad and the ugly, and so does the guy next to you and the girl next to him. So we know that that's what you come in there with. We know, we recognize that you're having to shoulder those responsibilities and the burdens and the compliments and the kudos and all those things and redeliver them in a way that keeps your teams motivated. And what we saw there that the that even the guest speaker noted was that each person, despite all of those burdens and despite, you know, everything that you carry into that room, each person was immediately collaborative with team members, management team members from every other aspect of our organization. We have, you know, a huge county. It is spread way out in ways that other Florida counties don't don't have to encumber. And I wanted to say on behalf of your county commissioners that we appreciate you so much for keeping your teams together and keeping them motivated the way that Chairman Mixon described because we truly do have a county here who works together for every taxpayer's benefit. And I appreciate you so, so much. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Meeting's adjourned.